Special meeting of Tuesday, June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three to order. And we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember DeHorn.
Here.
Councilmember Hostage.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Proton Bernstein.
Here.
Mayor Goine.
Here.
Flat number present.
And do we have to hold it open for public comment or no?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so at this time, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any.
We have one public here.
We have no one.
Okay.
I must admit that.
Great. So then at this time, we will move into our interviews.
I'll go and retrieve Darren. I'm not sure I say his last name. Looks like Darren is by Zoom. The first person is Zoom.
Yes.
Cable TV, we have Darren on the line.
We do not have Darren on the line.
Oh. Okay, is David Murphy here?
You David.
David's in person.
And these are all planning commission?
Carl Baker at the end is also planning commission, but he couldn't make it till later.
Yeah.
Will that Darren?
Oh, wait, this is Darren?
David.
David, okay.
David.
Darren's behind me.
All right. David. Darren is waiting.
Wait, I'm sorry, is Darren here in person, not by Zoom?
I have Darren down.
Okay, because we should do Darren first if he's here. Sorry, David. Darren is on the list first, but we thought he was on Zoom and he wasn't on the Zoom meeting. So we're gonna do Darren first? Okay, so we'll do Darren first.
We're gonna see him again real quick.
That's Tom just waiting.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
David, you're good.
Sorry, David.
Our Zoom person is not here.
Okay.
And Tom is waiting.
Okay. Good morning, David. It's nice to meet you. We are gonna go through a series of questions with you. Everyone will ask something different, and we have our planning commission chair behind you, Kathy Werman. And we have just ten minutes, and so we will be cutting it off at exactly ten minutes, so just to keep your answers succinct. We're gonna just start off with, why do you want to be on this commission?
Well, I think probably like a lot of people that want to serve on commissions, it's a good way to have an impact and be involved in the community. So, and I think of all the commissions, from my perspective, the planning commission has probably the most significant and long-term impacts in the city. And that appeals to me. So, and I've also always been interested in and paid attention to in the communities I've lived in over the years, developments, what happens to the community when something goes up. You pay attention to the bad stuff, typically when it doesn't work, traffic problems, parking problems, bad design, and fortunately, I think from what I've seen in the city, most of what's happened here is in the positive column. So anyway, I'm interested in it, and I think I'd be good at it, and that's why I'm here.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
How long you been in town? I bought a house down here in two thousand and thirteen.
Okay.
I've been coming here for, I don't know, twenty-five, thirty years.
Yeah.
All right. And as I was getting ready to approach retirement, I got a house down here, and then I'm now a full-time president.
Excellent. Thank you.
Been doing a while.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your interest in the commission. What's your understanding about the role of the commission?
My understanding of the role of the commission, and then I've watched some of the meetings, is that it is a advisory, sort of an advisory role, guidance to the city council for what happens in development, land use, buildings. And so it's a, it's an important role, and it has, I think, a lot of influence in what happens and what doesn't happen in the city. And it is subservient to, or subordinate to the council, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you tell us about your civic involvement here in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you to be on the planning mission?
Well, I think I've always had a strong community focus. Over the years, I've done a lot of volunteer work outside of my regular job. And so I think one of the attributes I would bring to the planning commission is a very strong community focus. Since I've been in Palm Springs full-time, I was one of the founders and the leader of the Community Partnership on Homelessness, which was tremendously gratifying. We started that organization sort of at the beginning of COVID, when things were looking pretty dicey, and that work was just super rewarding to me. And that's actually what spurred me when I saw the opening on the planning commission to throw my hat in the ring, because I got a lot out of doing that work. And I also serve on the Navigation Center Advisory, Resident Advisory Working Group. And I've participated in that because the Community Partnership on Homelessness was an advocate, as you probably all know, we were strongly behind building some kind of navigation center. So now I'm on that.
Thank you.
Thanks for committing to all the service with the, helping to solve the homelessness issue. That's great. I appreciate it. Excuse me, the work you've done. As we're talking about planning commission, what qualifications do you feel you're bringing to the commission from a technical standpoint?
Well, first, let me tell you, it's probably not the best way to answer the question. I don't have a city planning or urban planning background, and I'm not an architect. Put that out there. But I do have a, you know, years of a career in business. I worked for healthcare software companies. So I would kind of run the gambit on business management. I've served in executive levels for software companies, and so there's a lot of planning, development, negotiation, contract negotiations. And more important, I think, it's my temperament to be successful in that environment. I had to have the right temperament, which is flexibility, kind of emotional. I would, my colleagues and friends would say I have pretty strong emotional maturity. Easy to work with, and I, so I think those are the strong skill sets I would bring.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Thanks for being here and applying. So you followed a few of the planning commission meetings, you said?
Yes.
So what do you think in general the planning commission's done right or wrong that you've noticed over the last two years?
Well, the last one I listened to was really interesting because they had two issues at two different ends of the continuum. One was the, they were discussing a delay in the development of project at the six-story mixed-use building on Museum Way at Delardo. And they were, the applicant was petitioning to for a delay. And I was really impressed with the deliberation, the kinds of questions that were asked of the developer by both the commission and supported by the city staff. And I was just, I was encouraged and thought, watching that, that I would be good at that, you know, helping in that capacity. So that would be one example. On the other end of the continuum, and just coincidentally, in my neighborhood, Day Star Hotels was petitioning for some variances in their project. And again, I was really impressed. It's a small-scale development, but you know, it's on a busy street, Palm Canyon. There are a lot of really good questions about, thoughtful questions about parking in the adjacent neighborhood and getting in and to and out of, so access number of seats in a restaurant. And so I found it to be, you know, very collaborative and deliberative and very thorough, so.
What question wasn't asked?
During the last planning commission you listened to, but you would have asked. One of the questions I had, and I only know this through the, because I'm in the neighborhood, was an issue around the sidewalk. So there's a sidewalk that runs along Palm Canyon, and in this case, the driveway goes all the way to the street. And I thought it was a little fuzzy around where the sidewalk would, you know, be contiguous. And that was a little bit of a concern. I just imagined people and pedestrians not being really sure where to walk, particularly backing out of that property, which is the narrow. So that was one thing that struck me. Cool.
One other thing, you understand that the time commitment with planning commission, it's a very time-intensive commission, probably more so than most of it.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I'm retired, and I'm looking for, and you know, I spent a lot of time with the Community Partnership on Homelessness, still do, but less so because there's a lot of progress made.
Yeah.
So frankly, there's less for us to do with that group, which is good news. But yeah, I, I have time, and I have a strong work ethic, and I do the homework, and so I'm ready for that kind of commitment.
Okay.
Thank you. And then I'm gonna ask every single candidate this question, just like all of our questions, but if you're not able to serve on planning commission, are you interested in other commissions? Did you look at any other ones? And why did you, you know, I think you explained why you chose planning, but if you could just describe if you're interested in any other commissions?
Well, the only other one that was, came up when I saw the planning commission opening was Parks and Recreation. And I thought, well, that's interesting. I use the parks quite a bit. I walk my dog. I play pickleball, tennis. But it didn't appeal to me, and I'm not, that's not a, it just didn't appeal to me.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much. Really appreciate it, David, and you're, you're all set. Thank you so much for you, for the city. Appreciate you.
Thanks for coming in.
Kathy, do you want to sit at the table? You're welcome to, if you want to sit either over here or here.
Sit next to Kristi.
That's fine.
Yes.
And, and counsel, I'm not going to introduce us, but I will introduce Kathy because I assume that they know who we are, but they might not know who Kathy is. Yeah. So it just takes too much time.
Right.
Yes. Tourist, no.
Rita, I'll bring that one in. Darren said he'll pass, so he did confirm, but then he said this morning that he'll pass.
Oh, so we're not having Darren at all? Okay, so no Darren, we're not considering them. Although hopefully people know who Kathy is too, but I'll still do an introduction. Good morning, Thomas.
Good morning, everyone.
Take a seat.
Morning.
Just thank you so much for, for being here, and yeah, absolutely. And I just want to let you know, we have a very strict ten-minute timeline.
Okay.
So if we don't get through all the questions, that's it. So try to keep it, your answers brief. I do want to just introduce our, our planning commission chair, Kathy Werman, that's here, and, and thanks to her is our city clerk. So, you know, just so you know who everyone is. I'm gonna just go ahead and start us off with, why do you want to serve on the planning commission?
I've been involved in developments here at Palm Springs. I am a sales manager for a development called Woodbridge Pacific Group. We were instrumental in developing Sky, Divide, Maryland, Blair, Maryland. My experience is in real estate, as well as in development, within acquisitions and development, not only in residential but commercial and also healthcare facilities as well. My previous job, my previous side before real estate was in healthcare. I was vice president and CEO of a national home healthcare company that only supplied in HIV/AIDS and oncology. I developed six centers out in the United States and developed, back in the early eighties, when AIDS was just the beginning component to it, we developed contaminating clinics, various clinics for people with HIV, because there was no place for facilities to go. We also developed various programs within doctors' physicians' offices as well. I also developed a national, an international program for capitating rates for HIV and AIDS in the Sao Paulo and Brazil, and also Italy and Spain. So I've been doing a lot. But right now, this is sort of my retirement job, working with Woodbridge Pacific Group. I do know all the developments. I know what's going on as well. I keep in touch with what everyone who does on this panel as well. I've been actively involved with Jeffrey Bernstein as well, and very familiar with what's, thanks, as well as what's going on with the commercial use as well.
Thank you. Very impressive. A few careers there. Very impressive. Thank you for your work. Really appreciate it. My question is, what is your understanding about the role of the planning commission?
For me, the role of the planning commission, from what I read and what I see going right on, is basically reviewing the plans that come forward under the guidelines, reporting to the city council as well, looking at land use developments, the changes in basically rules and regulations as well. There are things that come across the commission that there are changes for land use and developments going from res, going from commercial to residential, as I see some projects that are going along on Indian Canyon as well. So that would be that, land use, developing those.
Thank you.
You got it?
Describe your civic involvement here in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you to be on the commission.
My civic component, I've been actively involved with the Gay and Lesbian Center. In the beginning, I also was very active in, and I'm also a Acateo Club member for the center as well, for the donations, large donations to the center. I was involved with the work of the Vandal League of Events, the Rights Campaign Fund. And in the beginning, And uh, in the beginning, I applied for acquisition uh as a consultant with um this AIDS project, but uh it didn't pan out that well. Okay, uh, but um it had nothing to do with, it had to do with the uh giving some advice. But anyway, um, the, I like the work that I do. My husband, uh, forty-five years, uh, is, thank you, uh, is an active member and on the board for uh Ranger View as well. His background is in York for development with disabilities. Uh, and right now he works as, his retirement job, because he didn't like retirement, uh, is his hospice social worker for surrounding hospice area.
Excellent. From a technical standpoint, what uh, what are the qualifications you think you're bringing to the planning commission?
On the technical point, what I'm looking at is uh land usage, land evaluation, assessment of that, reevaluation. Um, the other thing I bring to it, since I did work for developer, I know the other developers. I know the positive side of utilization of supplies and uh vendors that they use. Uh, what can be changed? Uh, because there are some changes that should come about with the developers in this, in this area within the valley because of the climate, because of the wind, because of the velocity of the air that comes through. We need to up our grade a little bit, I feel, uh, with windows, doors, uh, stucco, those components.
So, and what have you seen as a developer, just watching a planning commission, what they've done right or wrong?
With the planning commission or the developers?
The planning commission.
Okay. I, what have they done wrong?
You don't have to say anything wrong.
For me, I think what I see uh for the planning commission, what they've done wrong is I think we need to be a little bit more strict with some regulations. Um, because I see the complaints, I see the lawsuits that occur from different homeowners in the on developing some stricter guidelines uh that I think are really necessary because we are in a different environment. I am very happy with the results of what's going on with the community uh with the development and what's going on with downtown. I'm also very impressed with what's going on with Cathedral City and the developments of uh utilization too.
We won't hold that against you.
Listen, it's the dally.
If you're not um able to be selected for the planning commission, no comment on your application. We're asking everyone that, are you interested in other commissions for the city?
I I my goal is to be actively involved. I'm sort of um leaning off of the uh, like I said, I'm in my retirement mode at this point in time. Uh, so I would be more than happy to serve with the community because I really believe in Palm Springs.
Thank you. Great, well, thank you so much, I really appreciate it. We really appreciate you.
Wesley should be tuning this video though, uh, is Wesley online?
Wesley? Wesley is not online.
Is, are we early? No, we're right on time. Okay, we'll wait until nine and then if he's not here, we'll move on. Um, and counsel, feel free to to take the questions out of order. I think I'll start just since it's a overall question, but if anybody wants to change, it's fine.
It's rolling real well.
I have Wesley, he is here, I'm gonna put him in the panel.
Right after I take a bite.
Six minutes, seven minutes.
Well, we started a tad bit late, so I'm trying to get us back on track. We're on, we are, yeah, we're debating it up. I see, Wesley, can, are you?
Hi.
Okay.
Um, it will not allow me to show my video.
Okay. That's fine. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Host has stopped my video.
Okay, so perhaps, yeah, IT will work on that. Yeah, and that's, we can continue on Wesley even without your video. I just wanted to to let you know, you have the full city council here as well as Kathy Wormick, our planning chair, planning commission chair, and our city clerk Brenda Pre. Um, thank you so much for interviewing with us today. We're gonna have a very uh, so let's start with why do you want to be on this commission?
Um, I've been down in the Palm Springs area for about uh five years now and looking to get more involved in the city and uh the city dealings. Um, I am uh been in finance for um over fifteen years in project management. So I'm just looking to see how I can get back to the city and see how I could be more a part of the city um, city activities.
Thank you. Uh, what's your understanding about the role of the planning commission? And how, why did you pick that commission to apply for?
Well, I was trying to pick something that was more in alignment with my skills of um being in finance and um having some type of control over the budget, um, having um ideas of what, how the funds are used and how they're allocated um was of particular uh interest to me. Um, to be able to, you know, uh, try to become a part of more of what we can see uh in the Palm Springs area. Um, bring a little bit more diversity, bring a a little bit more um, uh, just, you know, fun ideas or or things to to light. Um, just seems like an interesting uh, interesting uh panel or a commission to be on.
Thank you. What's your role of the understanding of the, sorry, what's your understanding of the role of the planning commission?
Well, it it's to uh reallocate, uh, to allocate the funds that are uh collected um by Measure J and to um, and and to look for opportunities to um to be, to create programs that are in alignment with the Measure J, um, the Measure J um protocol.
Well, um, Wesley, did you apply for the Measure J commission or for the planning commission?
I think uh, so it's been about a year since I applied. I think I applied last year after the cutoff and I did apply to both.
You applied to both, okay, so this interview right now is for the planning commission, not Measure J.
I thought it was for the Measure J, um, that's interesting, okay.
Or would you like to have us interview you for Measure J?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm interested in looking at where I can, where I can be of more benefit to Palm, to the city of Palm Springs. So um, I am fa- familiar with both. Um, I've sat in and reviewed um the uh, some of the past videos from the planning commission as well as from the Measure J, um, obviously. And um, I'm just interested in seeing where I can be more of a, a, of of an asset to the city of Palm Springs.
An ability to interview separately at this time because of the scheduling, um, but so can you give um, can you answer regarding um the role of the planning commission now?
Sure, so the planning commission, um, so um, from my understanding is you review, you review um different policies that come before the planning commission and um, uh, make decisions on uh zoning or any plan, city planning um projects that come before the commission.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Wesley, uh, could you describe your civic involvement in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you to be on the planning commission?
Um, to date, I have not had any civic involvement um besides um, you know, dealing with a planning and and zoning commission itself. Um, just uh applying for permits um for construction and and for um, you know, home modifications. Um, not necessarily anything dealing with uh in a service capacity.
Thank you. Hey Wesley, this is Rhonda Hart. Uh, you say your last name for me, please?
Ozas.
Ozas, okay, excellent. So um, what qualifications do you think uh or feel that you're bringing to commission service? And it may make more sense to to speak towards Measure J on this question.
Well, uh, I've been in business, working for, uh, I've been working in Silicon Valley um in the um for Fortune 500 companies, um, been in various positions that include budgets and plannings, um, project management of different finance responsibilities. So bring wealth and knowledge as far as how businesses run. Um, bring a lot of of experience as far as uh dealing with the different cities um as uh, as a, as a home builder um and a home remodeler. Um, so I'm familiar with a lot of different things and how they affect small businesses, how decisions of the city and and how they affect small businesses. And I think I bring a different, a, 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 a wealth of knowledge as far as that perspective um to to the team. So I, I mean, again, being on both sides, right? Being on the business side, understanding how business protocols and decisions get made, most of them financial. Um, but also understanding how some of those um, some of those issues affect downstream small businesses and residents and residences um of the community.
And thank you, as a follow-up, earlier in your introduction, you mentioned it, we would bring diversity to the commission. Uh, it, it, what way do you see that?
Well, it, I, I'd see it as more diversity of thought. Um, you know, uh, I'm African-American, um, but I I'm more so am talking about my experience in business, my experience and being in various different sides of business of, 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 you know, being a biz, coming from the corporate environment as well as the small business capacity.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Well, see, this is uh Jeffrey Bernstein. Oh, uh, thank you for applying. Uh, so just between either, I guess, Measure J or planning, what do you see that's been done right or wrong in the last few years with those commissions?
Um, I wouldn't necessarily say anything is is wrong. I think that it just, um, it it it's just our, our, the thoughts of the community or the plans of the community being being addressed. Um, the changes in the city of Palm Springs, um, I understand we have, you know, a large, like, um, I mean, COVID was a a huge hit to every community. Um, and I think that, you know, the city of Palm Springs did a great job of of adjusting to um the the COVID response. But, you know, there was also some prot- protocols that, you know, impacted the small business person. Um, it was difficult to get things done as far as permitting and and inspections and things of that nature. And delays cost money for small businesses. And, you know, uh, it it impacted me, it it impacted, I know it impacted a lot of people. Um, and still continues to impact. Um, I I still don't think that, you know, a lot of the business um activities have returned to pre-COVID, uh, to pre-COVID activities. So um, there, there are still some things that that can still be addressed, um, I think, by the city. Um, and with um some greater understanding of how it affects the smaller, not just the residences, but the small business person uh in the community is is, I I think is is really important.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, um, my last question is, are there any other commissions that you would be interested in if you're not selected for the two you applied for?
No, I I think I'll limit my interest to uh, to those two. Uh, I think it's where I can be the the best beneficial, like I said. You know, coming from being a small business owner um and having the experience in finance and business activities. Um, I think it it will help me be a, 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 a good commissioner on these two, uh, on one of the two commissions.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much Wesley, that's our our time, we really appreciate it. And I'm glad we got to clarify your interest on those, both of those commissions. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Bye.
So the next is at nine twenty, so you have a few minutes.
So, yeah, so is this um, so there just wasn't somebody who could do nine ten? And no one could, who could do nine forty?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have these short breaks.
Mm-hmm, you have a little short break.
Unless they're early.
Unless they're early, yeah, if 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 any of these people come early.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, let me check for Neil.
I mean, we Yeah, we might maybe towards the nine forty, we'll take a longer break, but
Okay.
For now, I think we just started, so.
All right, let's, let's see, the meal, let's see.
If not, no big deal.
Even better, like a Chinese cup of tea. Thank you.
It's just a killing.
I think he forgot what I, what commission.
I have September.
Or planning though, yeah.
But, but nine months ago.
Yeah.
We didn't have carryovers from the last time. It's just a question. We had a good, a really good group of people who applied, not that I'm aware of, the last time.
I mean, this, we have all of these applicants started a year ago, so I think next year, the idea is that we'll only have it during a three-month period, so people don't forget. And so we can, they can also let us know if they want to do more than one.
It's coral paper, applying for both or just for?
No.
No.
We just couldn't make it early, so we planned it, but later.
So he's, that that will be an interview for both of them?
No.
No, no.
Just for planning.
Yes, he had a standing um office meeting at this time.
Yeah. Yeah.
Honestly, Rita says there was a resume attached, but it's not here.
If someone is out sitting outside. I have saw someone there. Hello.
Hi, how are you? Hi, Neil, nice to meet you. So you've got the full city council here as well as their planning commission chair Kathy Wormack. Sitting here and then our city clerk Brenda Prey. Uh we have ten minutes for an interview. Um everything is kind of moving quickly, so it just to keep your answers short and we will end it at ten minutes. Um even if we don't get through everything. So we'll start off with why do you want to serve on the planning commission?
Uh well, so my husband and I moved to Palm Springs about three years ago. Um uh this is our forever community and. Um we, I really wanted to figure out a way to be a little bit more active, um especially in in a leadership role and also kind of of. Uh sharing some of the skills that I've learned over the night career uh with the city and trying to help on guide us to the best possible to me we're gonna know it can be.
Great. What's your understanding about the role of the planning commission?
So I have attended a number of meetings through the last year, especially on Zoom. Um and so I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of what the the charter of the of the commission is and seeing kind of the um the uh. The topics that have been brought there. Um so my understanding is that it's primarily focused on development. Uh zoning, kind of where the where the where we want community to go go growth wise, um and the type of development that we want to see. So really trying to keep our community rich, but also keep it TV character, so.
Great, thank you.
Uh Neil, uh tell us about your civic involvement in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you to be on the planning commission.
So my civic involvement uh with my community with uh with making uh friends, kind of building a community of friendships here has been significant. Uh as far as volunteer or other commissions, this is my first foray into trying to get involved.
Say your last name for me.
Try.
Try, okay, I was gonna I say I'm looking at, I was gonna say tree. Yep, excellent, alright. So, I mean, what um I I see you have a. A pretty extensive medical background. What qualifications um do you feel you're gonna bring technically? To the planning commission?
So as far as like actual development or building or background within um that, I don't have, I don't have background. So what I have that I think would be valuable is um I'm deeply interested in the community. I have. A long history in involvement with um affordable housing and alternative housing. Um and and I was the finance officer for the Madison Community Cooperative, uh which is in Madison, Wisconsin. Um and so understanding finance and kind of also how to create uh affordable housing and making sure that is a. A strong component of a rich community is something that I would bring, I think, to the planning commission. Um I also have uh more than ten years of uh senior leadership um with uh healthcare IT. So understanding how processes work, how um how to make processes more efficient, kind of asking the right questions to understand. Um where things need to go, that's that's what I bring to the table.
Sure, excellent, thanks.
Can I ask a follow if I can about explain more about your background in affordable housing?
Yeah, um so Madison Community Cooperative is a system of uh about, I think, twelve houses now um in Madison, Wisconsin. The homes were, um they're all part of a a trust that was entrusted to the, they were donated at some point. Um they're multi um multi-unit buildings, so there's usually about thirty to fifty people living in a communal environment. Um where there's shared living spaces, uh most of the living spaces are shared, all of the um the. Expenses are shared, including food, and then there's work shares. So everybody has a function in the house to share the community, so.
Thank you.
You said you watched a few of the planning commission meetings?
Yes.
And how, what do you think they've been doing right or wrong, or what would you bring differently to it?
Um it was mainly just getting an understanding of kind of what types of things are coming up. Um I don't know if I have a strong sense of. From any of the individual issues, how it may have voted differently based on them. Um. I do think that a lot of the the questioning that I saw, both there and also on the architectural review board, tends to be a little bit more. In the weeds versus kind of pulling back a little bit and saying, where are we going more directionally and asking some some more strategy questions? That I think would be helpful.
Right. I guess another question, if you don't, if you're not chosen for this, would you be interested in any other commissions?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. The the planning commission was one I just sat on a few times, I had a better sense of, but um right. They're very interested in any of the in the commission, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Follow up questions, so, okay, alright, thank you so much, we appreciate it and thanks for being a little early. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So then we might have still have some little bit of time, but before Robert gets here.
Robert is here now, he said, I'm kind of going. Yeah, he's on, if you want to join, it's up to you. He's available.
Oh, yeah, if he's here, let's, that's, yeah, that's fine.
You wanna bring him in?
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, okay.
Everyone's so early.
I log on like a minute. That's a big deal for that.
Cassandra's gonna bring the resumes for it.
Hi, Robert.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, there you are, we see you. Um hi, Robert, so you've got full council here, you also have Kathy Wormack, our planning chair. Which you who you know, and then Brenda Prey, our city clerk. Um it's good to see you, so we're, we only have ten minutes. Um I know you've you've interviewed before, so you know the drill. Um we're just gonna start off with. Why do you want to be on the planning commission?
Well, I've had seven years uh on the, well, let me back up. Originally, um I applied for planning commission. And I was told at that interview uh that I needed to uh spend some time on architectural uh advisory committee at that time, it was called. Uh so that I got to know better the city. Well, I've spent seven years now on the architectural advisor, now architectural review. And um I feel like I have um something that I can offer the city. I have um a design background. Um I have done a lot of planning in my uh professional career. Um and I really love the city and love to uh be able to um. Give back, you know, to give, to lend that experience to the city, so.
Thank you so much for all that you've done for the city and serving on AAC. Um what's your, we're asking each candidate the same questions. What's your role, what's your understanding of the role of planning commission?
First and foremost, it's to review uh projects for compliance with the zoning uh code with the general plan. Um it's uh important that the planning commission um supports council um and their priorities. Um and um, yeah, I think that's kind of it.
Thank you so much.
Uh Robert, welcome. Uh tell us about your civic involvement here in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you to be on the planning commission.
Well, as I mentioned, I've been on the um architectural advisory committee for seven years as vice chair. And um I I have been locally with my neighborhood, uh the Little Tuscany Neighborhood Organization. Um I served on the board for a while. Um I've served on a number of the subcommittees uh that that they've had. I've organized three uh modernism tours for our neighborhood. Um and going back to ARC, I've served on many subcommittees with the planning commission. Um to review projects.
Hey, Robert, uh you had a a long history in uh the planning process. Or the preparedness process to get to this point, so thank you for putting in the seven years on the architectural review committee. I think you you certainly bring a lot of great technical skills uh to the commission. What what do you see as um how do you see yourself um supporting city council? Uh is serving on the role of planning commission?
Well, I think, you know, city council um provides a a policy and direction, um and I think. Um I think the planning commission, as they review projects, um they have to do it in such a way that is. Uh in compliance or not, not in compliance, but is um uh support city council and um. Uh I I think, you know, we, the planning commission serves city council, so um I think, you know. Uh I I listen to a lot of council meetings and I, my husband, as you may know, is a former council member. So I'm very familiar with things that go on with the city, plus I monitor uh council agendas. Uh several of the commission agendas as they come out. So I think I keep up with what's currently going on. And I think having that um exposure and that interest uh really will that be, you know, I'll be able to support. Com- council and what they want to have done in the city. I think you just froze.
Oh, there you are, Robert.
All of a sudden, everybody froze.
Oh, it's it's us, oh, our connection's unstable. Okay, go ahead.
So I'm not sure what you heard or didn't.
Um I think the last thing was you're talking about just staying up to date with what's going on in council and in the community.
Yeah, so um I just, you know, uh since I I keep tabs on what's going on in the city and various commissions. I think that having that um, having that exposure uh really will help me as a planning commissioner. Support what council and the direction council wants the city to go in.
So obviously, you're very familiar with the planning commission. What do you think is, what's your impression of how they've been doing, anything right or wrong, or that you would have done differently?
You know, I think generally planning commission's doing. I I think generally planning commission is doing a great job. Um I think, you know, there's been a lot that's been going on with the city. Um with development, and I think one of the um, I think having a clear direction about what. Um how we want the city to look in the in the future as it relates to development is really important. Um I think the part the the direction council uh sets uh will help guide that. Um but I think the expertise that um people on the commission bring, whether that's a professional or it's. Uh as a resident, um I think they um. I I think they've been doing a great job, so um.
I'm gonna defer my other question. Are there other commissions you want to serve on since you? Pursued a very long path here, yes. Um alright, well, Robert, we really appreciate you coming in and. Um thank you so much. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done for the city.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Bye. I I think that's fine, like I said, I wouldn't be here early, so I don't begrudge anyone for not being here early. By the way, Kathy, I did try to get another architect to apply.
I know, we had one, but his application came in a day late.
Oh, no, that was.
No, yeah, it would have been good to have a couple.
Yeah.
We uh.
Has JR said anything?
No, he's uh, he didn't send you emails.
Nope.
Yes, he was going to. Uh he thinks right now it's important that he stays on. Uh that we need, we need him, which I agree with.
He was considering not.
He's just been, JR's taken work on this here in San Francisco, San Diego and LA. As well as um putting in sixty hours a week on the plaza. So his time is is overcommitted and he said, uh he thinks he's gonna have a much easier year next year. I never think anybody's gonna have an easier year next year.
Right.
But um but he, at this point, he's staying on. But he has been thinking about if he can't make meetings, which has, has been a bit of an issue for him recently. Uh that's, that's when he, that's the only reason he would, he would leave.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, it's the only reason he'd leave is if he can't make meetings, but right now, I talked with him yesterday. And uh I actually talked with him about the material that I sent to you guys, so he's the vice chair. Um and he thought it was important for him to stay on right now.
Great.
And changing over, we're gonna be changing three people on the commission, that's a lot. Changing four would complete. Uh change the venue right now.
I wish we had more women.
I know, it's always hard.
And that's two really good women.
Yes. We were, I I did ask Maria to put her name back in, but she's, she's not able to. I mean, so I tried recruiting, but. There are as many women in the development world as I'd like to see.
Yeah.
If we were in San Francisco or someplace where there are a lot of nonprofit developers, we would have.
Yeah, there's um a woman who lives here who used to serve as um, worked in the planning department in San Francisco. And she wanted to get a job here in the city, Palm Springs, in planning. So, but she has, that hasn't happened, and I'm curious if she's interested in serving on planning commission and she's not gonna work for the city. Cause that's, it's been years and.
There was a woman that that I've referred to, to the city and I think last October.
Oh, really?
Uh same story, I think, San Francisco and she was interested in working in economic development.
Maybe it's the same.
It's um saying that we're still live.
Uh we're live, where?
The meeting is still live, so.
But live, but what does that mean? Who is it being broadcast to?
The world.
So it's on YouTube? Okay.
He just wanted to make you aware of your.
Are we being broadcast?
To YouTube.
We are.
Now.
Do you know if they turn it up next year?
Chair, anybody, I think most people returning next year have extensions available if they want to.
I think they only have five, going on two or three years and you're four. Yeah, but you do have another. Yep, you have another term.
I wonder who took the last drop of coffee?
Oh, I did, sorry, there was this much left. City manager's office, there's K cups. Sorry, there is. A tiny drop left, so really great.
Wondering how you did this without coffee.
No, it's not. I don't know who brewed it. I really.
It's a really good. Market, uh whole, uh whole market, uh world market. And um but I do it my right. My right temperature, my right strength.
Oh goodness. So terrible, which every airplane coffee is terrible. So terrible, which every airplane coffee is terrible, but she just decided, I'm never drinking coffee again and never drink coffee again. Oh, my goodness. And I, I can't get over that because I just, I couldn't just stop. No. I mean, if I needed to, I could, but it would be a process. And Lisa just was like, no, no more.
Well, there's some, some things in life you can quit.
Yeah, for hers.
Not coffee.
Not coffee for me.
A little too easy to quit going to the gym.
Yeah, that's true.
I used to smoke.
You used to smoke?
Me too.
Smoke socially and then. I didn't. And then I hooked in with a doctor, so that was the end of that.
That was the end of that. Yeah, Lauren used to smoke. But she stopped, but she, when we're old ladies and living in Paris, we're gonna take up cigarettes. Well, she tells me, she's gonna get smoked again. She's like, she always tells. Well, she tells me, she's like, you're not actually gonna smoke, Grace. She's like, you, you say this, but you're not really. And she's, she's right. I, I will, but.
Quit smoking, I took up smoking little cigars in Paris.
See? Well, and that's exactly it, yeah.
And unfortunately, when you're old, you won't get to.
Right.
They will tell you, you can't anymore, so.
See, I don't wanna live a long life, so I'm okay with that.
I have a friend who's, that's emphysema now and she's on a. Terrible smoker. And her husband still smokes.
Wow.
She's, but she can't barely leave the house.
Oh, no. That's terrible. Yeah, see, that's, that's why I've never smoked.
She was a lead singer for Shangri-La.
Really? Let's see.
So the only one left for this is Juanita and Carl.
Yeah. But Juanita's not supposed to be on until nine fifty and then fifty.
No, we don't have. Eight minutes.
Y'all got way ahead.
Is it, is it possible for us to pause the broadcast since we don't, we're not getting, we still have so much time? Is that allowed? Cause it just seems, we're on a break at this point.
In, in our recess.
Yeah, can we do that? Can we just, let's recess, please? I'd like to talk about my baby and I don't want that to be on YouTube.
That's right. We'll recess. Let me hold on a second.
He just needs to, we're recess, but he needs to do the broadcast.
Now I'll let you know when you're on.
Thank you.
So if you wanna announce that the next, the next. The next interview starts at nine fifty and we'll recess until the end and we'll make it official.
Great, so at this time, we will recess until our next interview, which is at nine fifty AM.
Are you ready? Yeah, we're still seeing you muted. Just want confirmation that you're.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, I'm, I'm really sorry for joining in too late.
Oh, we are, you're good. And we're just, we're just getting started, so you have the, the full city council here as, as well as the. Chair of our, of the planning commission, Matthew Warmack, and our city clerk, Brenda Prey. And this is being recorded, it's on YouTube. So we are, we have ten minutes and we're gonna try to go through all of our questions and we just ask that you keep your answers. Succinct, so we can get through all of them. And we're gonna just start with, why do you want to be on the planning commission?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason why is that I, you know, I would like to, I'm a Filipino here and I'd like to represent. Our Filipino community. What happened? I think I got lost.
No, you're good, we're listening.
Okay, yeah, and, you know, I, I, I could see the city is going in the right direction. And I, I would like to see what I could do to us, you know, to see what. Make it better or something like that.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, this is Kristi Holstich on the city council. My question for. Hi, thank you so much for your interest in representing and serving the city. My question is. How you picked planning commission to apply for and what your understanding is of the planning commission's role?
Well, the way I'm understanding is that when. We have, a planning commission serves as advisory role and they could approve or deny. Some kind of applications from, you know, contractors or businesses. who contractors or businesses that wanted to apply for, you know, zoning or permit or some kind of, something like that.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll just ask my other question now. Are you interested in other city commissions if you're not selected for the Planning Commission? We're asking every candidate that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I, I would like to be, you know, at least on one of them if I get selected and, you know, I would, I would like to be included. And because I've been a city, I mean, I've been a resident for 18 years here in Palm Springs. And so, yes, I would be interested in any one of them if I get selected.
Thank you.
Good morning, Juanita. Lisa Middleton. Could you talk about your civic involvement here in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you to be on the Planning Commission?
You know, I have not joined any meeting or anything at all. I was just, you know, became interested recently when I've seen a lot of, I'm really sorry, but I'm gonna bring it up, the homelessness here in the city and it's just so depressing. And so that's why I decided to see whether what, what commission I could join in.
Here in Palm Springs, Juanita, what kinds of groups and organizations and people have you tried to work with?
The Filipino community. I, I worked with my cousin Edwin Ramoran, which is Mayor Grace Gardner. I think they work together and some of, a few of the campaigns or something like that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, everyone's a great guy. Juanita, this is Rhonda Hart.
Hi.
The, can you share with us what skills that you feel you have that are your strengths that would add to any of our commissions?
My skills, I know I have my Master's in Business Administration. I've worked with the, I'm still working at the casino for 18 years, but I know a little about, you know, the Planning Commission because I got involved, my ex, I used to live in Indiana for 10, 10 years and we own several apartment buildings. And here we just, my, we just constructed a ADU, ADU unit here at the back of my house and which, we are the first one here in Palm Springs, California that built that. And, and so I, I know a little about, you know, the Planning Commission and what procedures and everything.
All right. Thank you. Well, thanks for building that ADU. That's great.
Yeah, that's just for my, I build it for my family.
Yeah, no, that's excellent. Great. Congratulations.
This is Jeffrey Bernstein. So in terms of your interactions and watching of the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, what do you, what do you think about the direction they're going in? Anything has they done right or wrong? Or what would you want to bring to that?
I, I think everything is going great. As of right now, I could see a lot of remodeling and construction around the city. And it seems that, you know, everything is going in the right path.
Great. Right? Any other questions?
Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, also right now I don't think of anything else. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Juanita. We really appreciate it and we will get back to you soon. So thank you so much. Have a good day.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna check for Richard.
Okay.
But Shar is standing by if we.
If we need to.
Yeah, because he didn't, he didn't confirm it. I had like calling him, so we haven't gotten a response. So let me.
Sounds good. Is Richard not, he's not one of?
No, this that's it for, for planning until Carl.
So why don't I come back at 1:30?
Okay, 1:20.
1:20. Nice to see all of you.
Thanks.
And I think Naomi is here.
Uh huh.
All right, see you in a bit.
Yes.
Bye. Thank you, Kathy.
It's so nice to see you. We change.
And everyone else. Good to see. Yes, we are like. Sharing all sorts of stories about my future Parisian life. Although I just got a text from Dominic, our biggest fan, who said that there's no audio. So hopefully that turns on soon. Dominic is a rancher, a student. He just graduated, actually. He's the one that says the meetings and he says hello. Yeah, he's, he's a great kid. All right, then let's skip to Shar. Do you have the list?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sure. Yeah, you do. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna start then with, with Shar. For all the interviews over soon?
No, no.
Do you need a word? So we've got, Naomi, just so you know, we've got some standard questions that we're asking and then that's it. So if you, once we go through this first round, if there's anything else you think we need to ask, you can let us know. Okay. Hi, Shar.
Hello.
Nice to meet you. You've got the full city council here as well as our City Clerk Brenda Prey and the Chair of the Measure J Commission, Naomi Soto.
Hi, nice to meet you.
We have just 10 minutes for this interview. So we're gonna go through several questions and just keep in mind that timeline for your answers. And we will start off with, why do you want to serve on the Measure J Commission?
Well, I've lived in Palm Springs since 2004 and I just want to make sure the community, you know, serve the community and help our, make our community better for the people who live here. I work, right now I work at Palm Springs High School. So I work with a lot of our young people and I want to make sure that we're setting good infrastructure for the future generations that Palm Springs can, can be a place where people want to stay and live and that there's jobs and, and like I said, infrastructure available to have a healthy living for here. And I do want to, I, I, you know, I do answer to Shar, but I do prefer Shara. So, but everybody calls me Shar, Shara, and I just answer to any of that. Because you know, when you have an unusual, I don't know how many other of you have an unusual name, you know, Shara Cabrera. So pretty much I just answer to Shar, Cabrera, anything close to that. Yeah.
Okay, Shara. We will, we will pronounce it properly, Shara. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Shara. This is Kristi Holstich, Palm Springs City Council. Thanks for joining us. My question is, how did you select the Measure J Commission as the one you're interested in? And what's your understanding of the role of Measure J?
Well, I was interested in Measure J because, again, I, I, working in the field of education, I kind of wanted to look at something different and looking at the different projects that Measure J is funding out in the community, like the parks and, and, you know, I know the pickleballs and other things have come up in front of the commission. That I, I was interested in, like I said, helping look at providing things for people in the community to make it a more attractive, you know, place. So my understanding is that it's a one cent, you know, tax on every dollar spent, you know, besides food and, and medicines and things like that. And so I know that actually that you guys, as far as the, you know, our city has collected more than they first anticipated. And so, you know, I've, I've read about, I mean, the parks, the downtown park, shade structures. I like the idea that people can go on to the online and suggest, suggest something, you know, for their community and that, and that it's reviewed like the smaller scale things. So I think that's great as far as, you know, more grassroots interaction with the community and, and to spend things, the money in, in ways that people see helps them. So that's kind of why I chose it. Although I'm interested in other things too, but I just thought, well, give this one a try and, and, and learn more about it.
Thank you. And I'm asking every applicant, so it's nothing to do with your application or the strength of it. And by the way, I see that you're a school psychologist. So thank you for that work that you're doing in our community. But my question is, are you interested in any other commissions at the city level if you're not selected for Measure J?
Why would consider others? I mean, I mean, I like, I, I am interested in mid-century architecture and things like that. Arts Commission, I know, I find myself that I don't have a very, probably a great understanding of art, but on the other hand, I do enjoy going to look at art, you know, like I went to the Desert Xs and all these other things. So, and I, I have been to the Louvre and things like that to look at art. So I try to expand my interests. I think that's one thing. You know, I, I do see myself as a lifelong learner and I'm always open to learning new things and experiencing, you know, new, new things. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. I'm Lisa Middleton. And next question for you is, could you describe your civic involvement here in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you to be on the Measure J Commission?
Well, like I said, I've worked in the field of education for pretty much my whole life. So I have, you know, worked within, I worked in Desert Sands for a while and then I came over to Palm Springs. So I've worked up in Desert Hot Springs and, and down in Palm Springs. So I feel like I have a good sense of the community. Then during COVID, I started taking more of an interest of going online and looking at, watching some of the committee meetings for different commissions. And then I got involved in the Oasis del Sol Neighborhood Group just to try to get a little bit more involvement in that. I have partnered with things like, I, I think I put this in my application with the, the Palm Springs Library. I helped provide them materials for their Born to Read project, which provides books and developmental information to parents. Because I do think that is a bedrock of the community is literacy and, you know, good health and education for children.
Hey, Shar, it's Rhonda Hart. I, curious as to the technical qualifications you feel you'll bring to Measure J?
Well, I, I did get my doctorate in organizational leadership and, you know, I am considered an administrator, you know, with the school district. So I'm, I'm not overseeing budgets per se, but I am familiar with how things work as far as like, you know, this, this pot of money can't be used for this pot of money and things like that as far as the procedures as, as far as looking at financial types of, financial types of, of things. So I, I've considered myself like level-headed and, and, and like I said, I think as far as as technically I understand about how budgets work.
And I appreciate that you worked for Desert Sands, but I'm even more appreciative that you found a home in Palm Springs. So thank you.
Yeah, I decided I wanted to work more in my community for that, for that, you know, although it is difficult to switch districts, you know, when you start working somewhere, you get seniority and you get all these things. And, and then when I moved over, they were like, you know, they're gonna have you work in desert, in Desert Hot Springs. I was like, you know what? Desert Hot Springs deserves people that, you know, can provide services to them too. So it's like, I really do see it as that as community service as well as, as I know I get, I get paid, I get paid to do that, but there, but I do have a heart for that and, and spending time with youth.
That's great. The students need you. Thank you.
Hi, Shar. It's Jeffrey.
Hi.
Hi. We were on the Oasis del Sol Neighborhood.
I know where he lives.
So have you, have you watched the Measure J meetings? And is there anything that you sort of agree or disagree with how they've been operating or suggestions that you would bring to them?
You have watched a few of them on, you know, online that they've, that, that they've been on, on Zoom. I think it's a difficult task. I know because everybody wants their project to get approved. I think a lot of the things that have been done are positive things for the community. I, like I said, especially like the small things that people have asked for, like, you know, like the shade structures and, and things like that, that I think directly benefit the community members and that typically probably the city council wouldn't even be able to look into because you guys are looking at so many larger, you know, larger issues. So, so I do appreciate, like I said, that grassroots that there's that, that there's that opportunity to go online and, and fill out the application form and say, hey, this is something I see in my community. And I, I did see all, a lot of roads get repaved. So that was pretty nice in, in our neighborhood. And I know, and the sidewalk cutting, I'm not sure if that's coming out of Measure J, but I do think that's also a very important thing as far as accessibility. Because again, I believe in accessibility for all people, no matter what their, you know, abilities are. And so the fact that the city spent, is spending money doing all the sidewalk cut-ins for accessibility, I think is, is long overdue.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. Well, I think that's it unless someone has something else. All right. Okay. All right, Shar. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you and we'll be in touch. So thank you.
All right. I appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay. So then I'm taking, Richard is not participating?
Richard, no, he's a no show. We called him a couple of times.
Okay.
Truly warrants.
Oh, cool.
Let's see, I have Peter. If you're ready for Peter, he's, he's already ready to be brought on.
Peter's ready?
Yeah, Peter's ready.
Okay. Yep. Let's go ahead. Anything you want to start?
I have 10 minutes.
I mean, one thing is just around, you know, what they do, but it's valuable to have on the commission, people who utilize the city in different ways. So if they go to parks, if they wear some certain facilities that they've been to, just like their understanding of the city.
Okay, great. I don't see Peter's education. Oh, here it is. So we're just waiting for him? I didn't ask Kathy, but I feel like she would have jumped in.
He's declining, he's declining camera. So we have a couple of people that didn't want to turn that camera on.
I, I think that's really fine.
Yeah.
I, their answers are the important part. Yeah. I'm, I'm not here to force people to be on camera. Hi, Peter. Are you here?
Well, Madam Mayor, I am on.
All right. Hi, Peter. It's good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
We've got our full council here, our City Clerk Brenda Prey and the Measure J Chair Naomi Soto. We have 10 minutes, so it's, it's quick. And we're all gonna ask a few different questions. We're gonna start off with, why do you want to serve on the Measure J Commission?
This is now, I'm finishing up my third year as the President or Chair of One PS. I have been involved with that organization for 10 years. I feel very committed to the, the health, welfare, beauty and the livability of Palm Springs. And I want to continue to help the community in any way I can going forward. Measure J was a commission that appealed to me and as a result, sort of the vehicle or avenue that I wanted to use going forward to help the city.
Thank you. Hi, Peter. It's Kristi Holstich. Good to see you.
Hi, how are you, Kristi?
It's a safe full disclosure. Peter lives in my district and I know him and he's done excellent work for One PS. So thank you for your leadership. My question is, what My question is, what is your understanding of the role of the Measure J Commission?
Uh, as I understand it, it is uh to look at projects that have been submitted generally by. The city, by city council, by departments of the city. Um, and uh, to assist in making decisions about how to fund those projects. And then the, a small percentage of the budget goes for community uh uh initiated projects. And I and my understanding is that there's a backlog of those, so that I'm not sure that that's currently open, but uh it it is the. The less significant vehicle of of funding city projects where. Members of the community like myself would say, I'd like to have this done.
Thank you so much.
Right.
Thank you.
Hi, Peter, it's Lisa Middleton, and welcome.
Hi, thank you, Lisa.
Uh, can you tell us about your community involvement here in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you to be on the Measure J Commission?
Uh, well, it's a, it's um. Uh, a a vehicle for me to get to know the city better, being on, being on One P S. Um, living down in the southwest corner uh in Christie's District. Uh, I previously hadn't felt that connected to the entirety of the city. And I think by by becoming involved in One P S, by first uh serving as the uh a treasurer and then currently as the chair. Uh, I have gotten to know a lot of the issues that face the entirety of the city. And I've gotten to know a lot of the neigh- the neighborhoods of the city that I frankly didn't really focus on previously. And there's some wonderful, wonderful neighborhoods outside of where I where I live. And uh, I I think that's helped me understand the need for capital projects, not just where I live, but all over the city.
Thank you.
Hey, Peter, it's Rhonda Hart.
Hi, Ron.
You uh, you bring an impressive background with your service with One P S uh to the table. What do you think are are the the technical skills that uh you bring from not only that leadership role? But your your professional life?
Uh, I, well, I was a lawyer uh for forty-two years, a trial lawyer.
And I'm not gonna hold that against you.
Yeah, thank you. A lot of people do. I uh, I think that I learned the uh advantage of uh of compromise in that position. And I think even in a connection with Measure J, a lot of it is compromise. It's it's, it's listening to citizens and what they want, listening to city departments and what they want. And trying to find a common ground that satisfies as many of the interests of the citizens of Palm Springs as possible.
Excellent, thank you.
Hi, Peter, it's Jeffrey.
Hi, Jeffrey.
Nice to see you. Um, so you, obviously you follow Measure J pretty much. What do you think they've been doing right or wrong, or what suggestions would you have, or what direction would you like to see it in?
I have a quick question for you, and maybe it's a concern, and that is, I saw the uh takeaways from the May. Budget study session, and I saw that there was at least uh contemplation of using Measure J funds. To uh do some debt service on uh bonds that might be issued for Fire Station One and for the library. And I'm just uh a little concerned about how much that may eat into the ability of Measure J. To deal with other projects within the city. Um, so I think that's a concern, is that I know that that it's legally possible to use the funds for that purpose. But I'm not sure it's the wisest use of those funds at this point. I just don't know enough. Other than that, um, I I I'd perhaps like to see more of the budget allocated. Uh, toward community-initiated projects, just to try to clear up some of the backlog. Um, but again, until I sit down and listen to uh people at Mes- at the Measure J meetings, if I'm so. Put on that commission, I I think it's premature to say what's right and wrong about the commission.
Great, I don't have any more questions.
Great, thank you. Peter, I'm asking every candidate the same question. If you're not selected for Measure J, uh, would you like to serve on any other commissions?
Uh, tough question. I have not analyzed the other commissions, so I really don't know enough. Um, I don't think I have enough of good background for planning, and I certainly don't have enough of background for uh historic preservation. Um, I haven't thought much about the other ones, frankly, Christie.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Peter, uh, Naomi Soto, good to meet you. Can you share how you utilize or understand the state of our city facilities? So anything from trails, parks, community centers, library, just the general state of city infrastructure, what's been your experience like?
Um, I do a lot of cycling, and I would like to see more bicycle trails. Uh, improving safety for cyclists in the city. I think that that cycling is um, uh, obviously ec- uh ecologically a really uh good way to transport within the city. And I'd like to see us try to enhance the safety of of bike trails. I'm also impressed with the the parks. For a city of our size, we have a remarkable park and rec department. And I think that uh the ci- the city parks are underappreciated. I like to make sure that we maintain them properly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Peters. I think that's it for now. We really appreciate you taking the time to interview with us, and we'll, we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you for taking the time to interview me. Thanks, take care.
Bye.
And so Latoya just called in an emergency, so she's canceled.
Oh, no. Will she still be considered? It's too bad.
How would you say her last name?
Latoya?
Yeah.
Latoya Bigpen.
Bigpen. Exactly as it looks.
Exactly as it looks, yeah. Her family's been here for a long time. We went to high school together.
All right, so then we're gonna be um, moving on to Clifford Hopkins. He's on until ten forty. I mean, so we're quite a bit early, so I imagine he's not gonna be here yet.
You know, so we've in the past, for folks on Zoom, contacted them and asked if they can bump up.
Oh, we're already calling.
Oh, you're already, you're already on it. Yeah, you're on top of it.
Yeah, that's why we knew she canceled, let's see, um. Look, frankly, left them, left a couple for us next to this, so we're asking everybody to bump up.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Andrea, she's um, it'll be one fifteen minutes, she may only be on, let's see if she's on.
Yeah, because people, if if they can't move, that's fine.
Yeah.
We'll introduce them at their time, but if they can jump.
Yeah, yeah.
Why not?
Often they can, since they're probably sitting around waiting. Ten minutes, they're probably just waiting.
Vacancies to be allowed sustainability?
I think there were still six, but uh I know there was a recent application.
Mm-hmm.
This weekend.
And the president, what?
Sorry.
Sustainability, how many vacancies are there? Six?
Six.
Yeah.
We used to have like such a full commission.
Yeah, it's thirteen.
Be a really popular one.
It's eleven, thirteen, and it's more than.
Oh, it's such a large commission.
Thirteen, yeah.
Well, it's eleven plus two alternates, right?
So six out of eleven are vacant?
Hmm.
For how long?
Well, there's a number of people who just, like David Freeman, who has just turned down.
Coming out.
But there's three new people gone on.
Because we can allow con- continuation of a term, right?
There was no one who could do it, yeah, they'd already done it, but.
Let's see, Latoya said a dog sit in late and doesn't want them barking, that's very emergency. Max will be logging in in about fifteen. See.
And so the Measure J, Brenda, we're gonna have a long break when we go to recess.
In recess, okay.
If we don't have anybody.
Okay.
That way we don't have to worry about.
Okay, we have Latoya, let's see, can we bring Latoya in?
Oh, wait, she can do it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Her dog said she.
Oh, okay. Great, yeah, she's ready, let's do it.
Let's bring her in.
Hi, Latoya, how are you?
So mute.
Yeah, I'm mute.
Hi, I'm good, how are you guys?
Good, thank you. So we've got the full city council here, as well as the Chair of Measure J Commission, Naomi Soto, and then our city clerk Brenda Prey. So we have only ten minutes for this interview, so we're gonna kind of move through it fairly quickly. Um, but we're looking for your answers, so we're gonna start with, why do you want to serve on the Measure J Commission?
Well, I want to be a part of our city. Um, I want to participate in our city involvement. Um, I have volunteered and locally in my community, um, just as an active community member. But I noticed that there was a position available for the Measure J. Um, and I just wanted to see if I could get in, just to get familiar with some of the things in the city. And to get my foot um in the door, just to be active.
Thank you. Hi, Latoya, this is Christie Holstich on the city council, good to see you.
Hi, Christie.
Hi, thank you so much for your interest in serving the city and everything you already do for the city. Uh, my question is, what is your understanding of the role of the Measure J Commission?
Well, I've been um attending a few of the meetings online. Um, my understanding is a committee of people um that get together to kind of um decide. Um, to meet and discuss some of the improvements and things that we have going on in the city. Um, and then they kind of vote to decide where they should um distribute monies. That are raised from the Measure J or forwarded over from the Measure J to kind of.
Are you, you cut out there at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I said, um, just to, a group of people that meet together. Um, they come up with with programs and plans to beautify our city.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning, Latoya, Lisa Middleton. Uh, can you talk about your civic involvement here in Palm Springs? And how that's prepared you uh to be on the plant, uh, the Measure J Commission?
Well, like I said, I've been an active um community member in the Desert Highland Gateway Estates. I was selected on the board to um choose our current chief um of police. Um, I have also volunteered, just doing some cleanup things around the community. Um, so it's very minor, but I'm, it, that's my, the reason for my interest. So that I can have a bigger resume and more experience with being involved in our city.
Hi, Latoya, Rhonda Hart. Uh, thank you for serving on the Police Chief Hiring Commission or Committee. That was great work. You had a good pick there. Um, from uh, you know, we, you've shared your community, community involvement, your work in desert highlands. Um, how do you feel um, other, other skills? What do you feel the other skills are that you'll bring to Measure J from a leadership standpoint?
Well, I have a background in hospitality and real estate. Um, and in hospitality, I would say the biggest takeaway is just being a lover of people, being able to be a great listener. Um, and a problem solver, and so if you've ever stayed at a hotel at any time. Um, you are familiar with the issues that would arise, and then just the sense of urgency. That uh, an employee would need to act, um, to resolve those problems in a, in a great way. You know, in a, in a purposeful way. So I am a lover of people, I love people. Um, and that's the biggest thing that I I think would be my takeaway, just my experience with with being a listener. Um, and a problem solver.
Thank you.
Hi, Latoya, it's it's Jeffrey Bernstein. Uh, so you said you had watched a couple of the Measure J meetings. Where would you like to see the funds for Measure J spent in our community?
I would say, um, I love children, and I think I would like, and I love reading. Um, I, I think I would like to see more funds spent on children programs. Um, and and, you know, just fundamental educational programs for children. Maybe um revamp in our library, adding another library, um, just making it more fun. But I'm very big on children education um and activities. So I would like to see more programs and things geared towards the children.
Great, thank you.
Do you wanna go?
Yeah, um, hi, Latoya, Naomi Soto. Um, can you share how you utilize or understand the state of our city facilities? So think anything from trails, parks, community centers, libraries. What's your understanding or what has been your experience with our city infrastructure?
Or how I have utilized them?
Yes.
Um, well, I would say I love, um, just with the the center that I'm close to. Um, there's a lot more resources for people who do not have access to like technic- technology. Um, so it's a great resource, and I I go to a church here, and our church, we're under uh remodeling. And there's a lot of things that we're missing in our church. So I like just the the resources that the center has, the JMo Justice Center. Um, and then with the implementation, the implementation of the restrooms. Um, that was a big thing at the James O. Jesse Center, but I also like the new um, the bike trail. I've been on that a couple times. Um, so those things, I think, were were great additions to the city. And those are some of the things that I have personally utilized myself.
Thank you, thank you. Last question, if you're not selected for Measure J Commission, we're asking each applicant. Um, are you interested in serving in any other city commissions?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you so much, Latoya, it's good to see you, and we will be in touch. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clifford was on, so we can bring you back on.
When she could do it.
Yes.
And her dogs are super loud, so her dog sitter wasn't there, that was.
And Cliff, so Cliff is on my.
Oh, my God, I stuck to this, but.
I know, I know.
We need to be tied on at the top.
I know, the names.
Clifford is standing one, Clifford's at the end.
Yeah, almost.
Almost, oh, here it is.
Hi, Clifford, are you with us?
Hi, good morning. Let me just figure out how to put my camera on, one second. Here we go.
And do you prefer Clifford or Cliff? I see you have Cliff in your.
Yeah, Cliff is fine, either is fine, but yeah, I prefer Cliff.
Okay, great, we'll use that. Well, Cliff, it's good to see you today. Uh, we have the full city council here, as well as our Measure J Chair Naomi Soto and our city clerk Brenda Prey. Um, oh, and I should say, this is on YouTube as well, I I keep forgetting to tell people that. Uh, so we have ten minutes, so we'll go through a a series of questions and just keep your answers succinct. That we'll start off with, why do you want to serve on the Measure J Commission?
Sure, well, I'm a proud resident of Palm Springs, uh, an active member of the community. Sure. Well, I'm a proud resident of Palm Springs, uh, an active member of the community. And I'm passionate about serving on the Oversight Commission for two reasons. Um, investment and accountability. So on the investment side, I believe that to ensure Palm Springs remains a great place to live, it's critical that we continue to invest in the things that our residents have told us are top priorities. Ne- uh, neighborhood services and safety, continuing to revitalize the downtown, investments in streets and parks, and certainly the infrastructure and capital improvement projects as well. And on accountability, my understanding is the ordinance provides that an Oversight Commission oversee and monitor all expenditures and audits of Measure J funds and work collaboratively with the City Council during the city's budgeting process to make sure that those things are linked. And I'd get a lot of energy and fulfillment from doing my part to help make sure we're holding ourselves accountable to delivering on the promise of Measure J for the next fifteen to twenty years. I know it has a long twenty-five year life. Um, so those are the two reasons why I'm primarily interested in, in serving.
Thank you. Hi, Christy Holstich. Um, good to see you. Thank you for your interest in serving the city. My question, you sort of answered, but I'll give you more time to answer and we're asking all candidates the Measure J Commission.
Sure. You know, my, my wifi just did a little hiccup when you were speaking, so I'd missed the question. I beg your pardon. Oh no. Hi, is that better? I just turned my camera off.
Hey, hi Cliff. Oh, looks like you're back. We didn't hear any.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm out of town and I thought we had really good wifi, but it just had a little hiccup. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you and honestly, I think it's our end, so it's, it's okay.
Great.
So, go ahead. We didn't hear any of your answer to Christie's question, to Councilmember Holstich's question.
Could you please repeat the question? I, I missed it during the hiccup.
Sure. What's your understanding of the role of the Measure J Commission?
Um, my understanding of the role of the commission is to help make sure that the monies that are raised from the one percent sales tax are spent in a, in accordance with the, the residents' priorities. And it's to attend the monthly meetings, to be an active participant and help ensure that um, the monies get spent in the best possible way. That, that is how I would describe it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Cliff, it's Lisa Middleton and thank you for applying. Can you tell us about your civic involvement in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you uh, to be on the Measure J Commission?
Sure. There are two ways that I'm involved in the community in Palm Springs. One is I am the president of my Homeowners Association in Indian Canyons. It's a micro neighborhood called Kings Point and I've been on the board for about ten years and served as president for four years. And I'll come back to that and share a little bit more detail to the second part of your question about why it could perhaps help prepare me for the commission. The second example is more recent, but I, uh, ran for the Board of the ICNO Group, which is the Indian Canyons Neighborhood Organization. And I'm now on the Board and one of my roles on the Board is the alternate representative to One PS. And I've started, um, attending, uh, those One PS meetings as well. So going back to the first one, one of the skills that I've had to bring to bear on the Kings Point Homeowners Association is, um, really being an active listener and showing a great, great deal of emotional intelligence and helping our homeowners understand that the rules and regulations that bind our community together are there for the good of the community and trying to create harmony, uh, among the neighbors. We have architectural and landscape control, meaning that homeowners who wish to make any changes to the exterior facade of their homes or to the landscaping at their homes have to submit an application and they have to detail exactly what they plan to do. And when the Board evaluates those applications, we're not using our own personal preferences and taste when it comes to architecture and landscape redesigns. What we're doing is we are understanding the rules and regulations that govern those, govern those two things. And we are looking to understand if the applicants changes align with the CCNRs and the rules and regs. And I always do, um, I'm always very, uh, intentional about providing context in these meetings because I think they are teaching moments. I've observed that a lot of homeowners, they buy into Kings Point. They don't necessarily read all of the documents. I don't blame them. When one buys a home, there's a lot of material. But I don't just assume that they know all the rules and during open meetings, I just explain the rules require XYZ. And when I'm evaluating your application, I see that it aligns with XYZ and that's why we can approve it. Or if there are areas that don't align, I explain why and then offer solutions, examples of what other homeowners have done. So that they can still move forward and make progress, but do it perhaps in a different way that better aligns with our rules and regs. Um, and the, 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 those skills of, you know, having to deal with homeowners in an open forum and trying to sort of get the balance right between helping people do what they want to do, but also being a good steward and being accountable and responsible for protecting the integrity of the neighborhood and threading the needle between those two things is something that I hope is a skill that the commission and being an effective commissioner, um, would be useful, uh, there. Um, the second piece, I've only been to two One PS meetings, so it's, it's really, really new. Um, but one of my observations is how the different speakers from the different areas of the city do a great job sort of explaining context and reasons why uh, uh, things are going on. And also how I've been so impressed with how, um, the speakers are good listeners and are open to sort of hearing feedback from, from members of the community and, and meet with them. For example, the new, uh, Fire Department, uh, leader that we have, I, I forget his name, but there was a woman at a recent meeting who was concerned about brush in a certain area. And like, I was so impressed with how, how the new fire chief was willing to meet with that person during the week and like see the thing and just taking accountability, taking responsibility, taking residences' views and comments so seriously is something that, that I would like to bring to, to the commission if, if you'd like to, uh, have me.
Thank you.
Hey Cliff, Rhonda Hart. Uh, very impressive, uh, marketing, uh, background and I appreciate you wanting to bring that to the table. But of your Tony Awards, which one are you most proud of winning?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm most proud of the Tony Award for Best New Play for a play that was written by a queer Latino man named Matthew Lopez and the name of the play is called The Inheritance. And it tells the story of three generations of gay men. And it contemplates and, and asks the audience to really think about what does one generation owe the next generation? And, and that, that's what I'm most proud of, um, because I feel like as queer people, um, if we don't commit to telling our own stories, who else will? And so it was such an honor to help Matthew, uh, bring that story to, to, to an audience on Broadway. And it was so rewarding to see him recognized, um, for, for that piece of work.
Fantastic, congratulations. So what technical skills do you feel that, uh, you'll bring to the Measure J Commission? To aid in, in the, the work of the commission?
Wha- wha- one of the skills that I have honed and become an expert in as a marketer is really using data and insights to inform strategy development. Now, to be clear, I'm not the person that's gonna actually pull the data or conduct the research, but I have for the last twenty-plus years managed teams that are accountable for bringing consumer insights, uh, to the table. For example, a consumer insight me, but it may be like during Instagrams or my time as the Chief Marketing Officer. How do teenagers and college students use the app? What do they like about it? What do they hate about it and why? Um, and then how do you take that goodness to, to inform how we could improve it and make it better for people? Or, um, you know, even in Broadway, the same thing, you know, doing research when I was, uh, on the producing team of the prom. It was a sweet story about a lesbian couple that was in high school and just wanted to go to the prom together and dance with one another like all the other kids. And the, the parents find out, or the PTA finds out and they cancel the prom, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, we were struggling at the box office and we did focus groups and some quant research to try to understand for the audience members that were coming to see the show. What did they like about it? What did they not like about it? And the purpose was to use those insights to, to refine and improve our marketing strategy. So lots of skills around using data and insights, lots of skills around budgets. So I've worked for big brands that have had, you know, had the good fortune of investing, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars a year in marketing budgets. And when you spend that kind of money, the finance team and the Chief Financial Officer wants to understand, what are we getting for the money? Like, what is the ROI on this spend? Why are we doing this? Like, do you have a rock solid business case or is there a hypothesis that you're trying to test? So lots of experience working with, you know, finance people to develop budgets with, with, with clear measurable objectives with KPIs so that when you spend the money, when you're three months in, six months in, twelve months in, depending how long the campaign is gonna be, there's a clear measurement framework and so you can report back and say, okay, we ran this campaign. This was the objective. These were the KPIs that we used to measure the efficacy of it. Did it work or did it not work? Um, and being transparent about that.
Thank you, thank you Cliff. We're actually out of time.
Sure.
Does anyone need, um, additional last minute question? No.
So we only have ten minutes per person, so that's.
So we're, we're, it's a quick, a quick ten minutes for everyone and we want to make sure that we don't, um, overdo it for any one person. So thank you so much, Cliff. We really appreciate your application and we will, we will be in touch. So thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff.
Andrea's waiting.
Andrea's here.
Michael's in person and Max is online as well, so.
Give me just a couple of minutes. Like, anyone else needs a quick?
What are we doing next?
Andrea.
Uh, Andrea. Oh no, I can't look. Yours, Kings.
Indian, Indian Canyons? It's one of the old William, I think it's William Chrysler.
It's, uh, he said it's a micro neighborhood in Indian Canyon. Uh, they have multiple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one of the mid-century areas.
Uh-huh.
But it's.
Yeah, Lisa, well, the next part.
Lisa. Kings Point. So it's like, it's on, uh, to, uh, to, uh, no.
It's right there at, uh, South Palm Canyon. Um, on Catty Corner to, uh, uh, the nursery, um, Mullers.
Oh, okay.
It's, uh, it's an older, uh, very architecturally, uh, rich, uh, in community.
We can get Andrea in. Minute late.
Ron, Ron's on here.
Oh, Ron's up, sorry, Ron. Thought I was the only one running out.
Want to wait for him to come back?
Yeah, we should, yeah. I think next time we need to build in like, just like a little break. Just because this is a three-hour block, so if we could do like a small break right in the middle.
Right in the middle, okay.
Cause I think, you know, earlier that we had some breaks, but they were, you know, we, you know, no one.
Early, early.
Yeah, they were too early.
Got it, okay.
All right, we're ready.
Midway.
Okay, so we can get Andrea in.
And then we moved all these up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No worries, we're good.
We're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Hi Andrea. You with us?
I am. I'm gonna get in the video, there we go.
Hi, nice to see you. Hi, so we have the full City Council here as well as our Measure J Chair Naomi Soto and our City Clerk Brenda Pre. This is also, um, streaming on YouTube. Just wanted to let you know that. We have ten minutes, so it's a pretty quick turnaround and we've got several questions for you. So keep your answers succinct and we will start off with, why do you want to serve on the Measure J Commission?
Well, thank you. Uh, I guess, you know, first of all, I was really just looking to become more involved in the community in the city of Palm Springs and helping, I think first and foremost, just helping to continue to help the city grow and thrive in the future. And after researching several of the commissions, uh, Measure J just seemed to jump out. I think it's, seems like it has the broadest reach within the commission. So I was particularly intrigued by that, you know, partially because I'm still a relatively new resident. I moved here four years ago. And so the opportunity to be involved in an organization or a commission that also helps me kind of learn the most and I think have a pretty wide impact. So I was, I'm very intrigued and interested in that. And I think secondly, I'm interested in serving because it's also ending and I know, what, fourteen years? Seems like that might be far off, but it's actually not. So I'm, uh, very interested in just helping the commission and helping council really think through, what's the strategy for the future for Measure J? So that, that work has to start now.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, it's Christy Holstich. Good to see you. Thank you so much for your interest in the city and joining the commission. Uh, my question is, what's your understanding of the role of the Measure J Commission?
Well, a few things. Um, I think, you know, at the, like, at the, at the forefront, it's really making sure that the expenditures, the budget that we are recommending to council is true to the spirit of the measure. Um, and so that's, that sounds like that might be something that's easy to do, but I know that that probably isn't always easy when, you know, people are coming with different perspectives. There are different requests. Staff have different requests that they're coming to the table with. So I think that's a primary role of a commissioner to just always keep that in mind and trying to, trying to keep that balanced in the, in the discussions and the conversations and then the recommendations. Um, also just making sure that, uh, you know, as much as possible, we're sifting through things that might appear to be pet projects, for example, or something where it's the loudest voice. And so um, I think it's always also bringing a perspective and a, a, a kind of a slant that is, hey, we're focused on, again, trying to make sure that we're doing what's best for the broadest, uh, spectrum of people and causes within the community. Um, and I, you know, our role is also, it's not to manage the projects, it's not to tell staff, uh, you know, how a particular project should happen. I think that, again, that can also easily happen, but instead it's more, you know, are these the right things and will they fit within the budget? Um, and then obviously making sure that the, uh, there's accountability within what is ultimately. And then obviously making sure that the there's accountability within what is ultimately spent. So I know, you know, reviewing the audit process and again, questioning staff when it appears that maybe that hasn't been the case.
Thank you. Thank you.
Andrea, Lisa Middleton, could you tell us about your civic involvement here in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you for the Measure J Commission?
Sure. Well, in Palm Springs, it's been more limited than I would say over everything else that I've done over my career. But in Palm Springs, I'm one of the founding board members and currently the treasurer of the Palm Springs Sister Cities Committee. So as you all are are well aware of that organization and just really, it's been exciting to be able to start to revitalize that. We've barely scratched the surface, but that has kind of helped jumpstart just an understanding of some of the different organizations in the community and have had an opportunity to meet and work with, you know, numerous people who've had a lot more involvement in Palm Springs because they've lived in the in the community much longer than I have. Not specific to Palm Springs, but I have also been involved in revitalizing the Women Leaders Forum, which is more of a Coachella Valley group. That group was went dormant during COVID like so many other organizations and was down to almost, I would say, almost zero members. And so I jumped in after meeting a couple of the people who were trying to revitalize that and became, actually ended up serving on the board this past year as the treasurer and the vice president of membership and helped grow that pretty quickly. So that's been a wonderful organization to work with and and has given me a broader perspective beyond, you know, just Palm Springs as well. So I think, you know, while I my civic involvement here is limited, it's certainly not limited in other. I've been on numerous boards, served in leadership capacities with those. And, you know, most of that experience has, you know, really has taught me how to work in a board environment where you really are more of an advisory and a an accountability capacity. How to, you know, bring various constituents together with many different perspectives and try to come to a best solution, even though it may not always be the, you know, the solution that everybody agrees with. So hopefully that helps.
Andrea, it's Rhonda Hart.
Hi, Rhonda.
Thank you. Your interest. What technical skills are at the top of your list that you think you would contribute most to on the commission?
I probably, for me, it's probably the strategy work. So my my day job, if you will, is really all around strategy, planning and helping teams execute on those plans. So again, I I think the the fact that Measure J will be ending, could be ending soon and and needs a clear path forward, if that's something that the community wants to, you know, continue to maintain in some shape or form. And so I feel like that, working with teams and organizations around strategy and plan, but again, with a focus on executing on that, not just, you know, hey, we've got a great plan and hopefully we can execute on it. You know, that's that's the work I've done for years and years. So I think that's one thing that I could possibly lend to the committee. Certainly, you know, I've been involved in organizations with very large buds, with very large budgets and I'm very comfortable with that. Served, like I said, on a lot of boards and in advisory capacity, so I bring that to the table. But probably it's the strategy and planning work that could be helping, if that's helpful to the organization.
Sure. Thank you.
Andrea, it's Jeffrey.
Hi.
So you've watched a number of the meetings, you said. And so what do you think about sort of directions? What are they doing right, wrong? Where would you like to see it going forward and where would you like to see the money?
Good question. Well, one thing I was very impressed by the, just the way the meetings, at least the meetings that I watched, were run. And that that makes sound kind of silly, but I was impressed that there were, you know, kind of, okay, we are hearing perspectives, but when it sounds like we're starting to maybe ask the same questions over and over again or start to go down a tangent, you know, pulling that group back together very quickly. And that's something that, quite a skill, and and I think it's what allows a team to do good work. So I just, I noticed that from the very beginning, very first video I watched. I, it seems like, you know, directionally, it's about I I guess I can't speak to like, you know, specific opportunities without really diving into the the budget. But, you know, it's unclear to me whether or not the budget over the next couple of years, you know, is that really hitting on the most important or, you know, contributing to the most important needs in the community? I'm not sure of that. That's something I'd I'd want to try to really understand very quickly. And I I know you're, it's on a two-year budget cycle, and so we're really probably would be starting to look out even two years beyond that. But just understanding as a team, are these the things, understanding from council, like what's most important to you as well? That's not funded by the general fund and, you know, trying to bring all of that together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Andrea, Naomi Soto, great to meet you.
Good job running the meetings, by the way.
Thank you. I don't know if I was here, but.
You're like a ham, you're like a nice hammer.
That is the sweetest.
You guys know her. Did I nail it? Was it? Nice hammer.
There's some big silent nods. Yeah. I would love to hear a little bit about how you utilize or understand the state of our city infrastructure. So anything from trails, parks, community center, the library, you know, what has been your experience with city, our city infrastructure?
As a as a user?
Correct.
Of those? Well, I I use the library. I'm a big library fan. I think, as you read, I was on our, the Indianapolis Library Foundation. So very involved in our local library and and feel like that's a vital resource. And so that was one of the first places I went when we came here and then, of course, you know, checked out books online during COVID. And so I I have, you know, I just follow what is happening with various organizations such as that we utilize the parks. I, you know, while this isn't a city city initiative, we're, we live right across the street from the Prescott Preserve. And so, you know, certainly while that's not funded by the city, you know, it's it's a, it's a community asset and the, you know, and I think the city needs to obviously know everything they can about that and continue to, you know, stay aligned with what the the trust is doing. But yeah, we utilize pretty much everything in the city, I would think. I will say, you know, very, my experience as a newcomer, relatively new person to the community is, you know, despite what people may read on Nextdoor, we have had nothing but really great experiences with, you know, whether it's police and fire and responsiveness. You know, our, my husband's the president of our neighborhood association and the, I have told so many people this back in Indianapolis where I'm from. It is shocking to me still, the engagement from local government, city council members are, you know, lieutenant, police lieutenant who come to a neighborhood meeting to share what, you know, to share their perspectives, support what's going on in the local neighborhood. So something that I think I wasn't expecting to find that and it's been a pleasant surprise.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Right. Your time.
Thank you. You're welcome.
No. Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Andrea. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye. Bye.
I don't think she had to say the nice part and you still would have been very pleased. Put it on my resume. She said nice hammer. I was like, you could have just called her a hammer. It's okay. Scorpios. Hello. Hi, Michael. Good to see you. So, you know the drill. Got 10 minutes and we do have Naomi Soto. Here's our Measure J Chair. If you've met, not sure if you met her. And then, of course, Brenda Pre, who's our new city clerk. So we're going to start off with why do you want to serve on the Measure J Commission?
On YouTube.
Oh, yes, and we're on YouTube.
We have 10 minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
10 minutes. Okay. I want to serve on Measure J Commission because I think, based on my experience both professionally and through my volunteering in the city, I think that can bring a perspective that will help the city achieve its its goals. For instance, I worked on urban design issues with my professional career and I brought some of those concerns over to planning commission. And I think that will help me recognize what are important capital projects for the city. In addition to my work with the city over the last, oh, maybe eight years, nine years, because I was on A R C, the poor planning commission. I took a real interest in trying, in in focusing on equity in a lot of the decisions I made having to do with citing particular projects, whether there is oversaturation of certain uses in the areas. And I think I I grew in that. The the time I spent on planning mission, I I was able to understand those kind of issues more clearly and I feel very strongly about that. And I also just have a a great love for Palm Springs and I, my grandparents lived here, my parents lived here. I've been a part-time resident since 2005 and then a full-time resident since 2010. So I think those three things.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for all your work for the city. Appreciate your service. My question is, what is your understanding of the role of the Measure J Commission?
Well, I mean, the bottom line is it's making recommendation to council, right? About how to spend the Measure J discretionary funds. I understand that. Beyond that, again, I would, I would go back to my two reasons why I think I'd be a good Measure J Commissioner. I would focus on those two issues, equity and funding and urban design from from the city's perspective, not from a private developer's perspective. And beyond that, I'd like to see if there's a way, and I'm not sure this is totally in the wheelhouse of Measure J, but I'd like to see if there's a way we can get staff or council to focus on certain major issues and pay less attention to issues that are a distraction to them to get things done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Michael, welcome.
Anyways, next question's a standard question, but tell us about your civic involvement and how that's prepared you to for Measure J. Okay. Well, again, I just go back on the last two questions because they kind of put that in for you. But you know, I've served on a lot of different subcommittees for council. I listed them in my application. I think that doing that, doing those sorts of exercises over the years has gained me a better understanding of the community, different factions, not user groups, but different groups within the city, community groups, specific to geography, just specific to interests. So I've I've learned a lot about that in the seven years I was on planning commission, a little less so on A R C, but a lot on these various subcommittees I've been on.
Excellent. So the thank you for your tenure of service to the city. That's fantastic. What are the top technical skills that you have that you think will aid the Measure J Commission the most?
Technical. Well, probably honestly, I'm not a finance guy. But I think I can see a bigger picture. Maybe I don't know enough about the nuts and bolts of financing a project at this point. You know, you go on planning commission and you learn things. You go on A R C and you learn things. You become a better member of that group. So I I think I'm a pretty fast learner as far as that goes, but that's really not what I spent my career and my volunteering for the city doing. But I think that if you want to call it technical, that urban planning part of it, I I have these driving around the city or walking or biking around the city, I see certain things in my mind that I think are important for the city to do that aren't getting done. So I'd have to fall back on that.
Excellent.
Just. Michael, thanks. And thank you also for all the work and everything. But what are some of the things you would like to see Measure J go towards?
Well, as I put in my application, I'm on the Board of Directors at Fresno Palm Springs Library. So we absolutely need to fund additional monies for the library. Now, I don't know where that fits into the Measure J wheelhouse or not, but that's where I'd like to see money spent. I I know this sounds.
No, you're fine. I'm not sure that was.
Again, I'm not sure this falls into the Measure J wheelhouse, but I've been a keen observer of the downtown park. And I've worked on a subcommittee for approval of the park design. And from an urban planning standpoint, I think it's a wonderful project. I think it needs some help along the edges in terms of what uses go along the edges of it. I put proposals out to Flynn to provide just a couple of food trucks or some kind of seating or some other reason for people to be there. But as far as Measure J goes, I think it's a very sad state of affair that that fountain doesn't work. We've spent millions of dollars on that.
It is working again.
Well, it wasn't a couple of weeks ago. Is the is the fog working?
No, the bug is. No, the, I think that was not fixed.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Yeah.
And we spent so much money on that. There's gotta be, and it's new. It's not like the Francis Stevens Park Fountain where it's 50 years old. It's brand new. We just paid for the thing. You know, if this was a refrigerator in your house, you'd be suing Resting House or that's the one. Subzero, you know, you wouldn't stand for it if it was your house, but we spent all that money on that. It's not working. I don't know if Measure J can address that. Those are two things.
Thanks, Brendan. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi.
You alluded to it a little bit in some of your previous questions, but I'd love to hear a little bit about how you utilize or understand the state of our city facilities. So anything from trails, parks, community center, library, you know, how have you experienced our city infrastructure?
Well, certainly the library and the pride building that's attached to it. Sad, sad, sad. We all know that. I I think, I'm not talking about the community centers, but I think the parks are in pretty good shape. They could always be improved. I mentioned Downtown Park. Trails, well, I've walked up the Palm Hills Trail a few times. I've walked the Osford Trail a few times, Osford Canyon. I don't know, maybe it, and this is not really fresh, I'm just using, but maybe there's a way to benefit the Osford Land Trust to Measure J.
Are you interested in serving on any other commission? We're asking each applicant if you're not selected for Measure J.
Yeah, well, I applied for Parks and Rec. I was really hoping to get on library, but and I maybe I'm admitting something here I shouldn't, but if no, I, it was unclear to me when I was turning out and no one really said this is the date. And so I stayed, I'm staying to kind of the bitter end, but if I had known that there was an opening in library, can, library trustees and then I was turning out at such a close date to it, I think I would have applied for that. But there's no opening stuff. But I applied for planning commission. I I think my equity focus will help there and I think my focus on the downtown park could help.
Thank you. All right. So that's it. Thank you so much. Well, oh, just about. So we're good.
Nine minutes and 33 seconds.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Michael.
All right. And then this next online is. I think so. Is she gonna do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Max.
Oh, Max and Paris? Okay, Max.
People on vacation. We're out.
To people who are on vacation and do commission interviews. I said I give major kudos to people who are on vacation and do interviews. Did you? I my vacation is sacred. I don't, I didn't answer it for anybody. All right. Hi, Max. Are you there?
Hello. Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Hi, Max. Nice to see you. We've got the full city council here as well as our Measure J Chair Naomi Soto and our City Clerk Brenda Pre. And this is also streaming on YouTube. So we are, we only have 10 minutes, so it's a relatively quick time. So we are, we only have ten minutes, so it's a relatively quick time. We ask that you keep your answers succinct. And we will go through um, the same questions that we've gone through with everyone else, starting with what is your interest in serving on the Measure J Commission?
Uh, well, hello. First of all, welcome. Hello, everyone. Good to meet you all. Um, the first question, I, I'm very passionate. I mean, I just developed this huge, I mean, as a resident, proud resident of Palm Springs. I wanna serve the city of Palm Springs. I want to be able to be, to continue to be a, 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 a part of the community. And um, I felt that Measure J, I can uh, bring a, a lot to the measure to uh, to the committee oversight committee and I that's, that's why I wanted to, I wanted to serve. I wanna be able to serve my city.
Hi, Max. This is Christy Holstage. Good to see you. Thank you so much for your interest in serving the city. Uh, my question is, what is your understanding of the role of the Measure J Commission?
Um, so uh, the measure is provide recommendations uh, from the one percent sales tax uh, that we collect uh, and if, to be able to analyze what we have from the Measure J, uh, parts of either parks and recreation, fire departments or uh, police department or even the roads, anything that would improve the, the city uh, 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 analyze all of those uh, recommendations that from residents or businesses or any, or anyone or uh, uh, attendees and uh, uh, be able to provide recommendation to you as a city council. That's, that's my understanding of the Measure J.
Hey, Max. Looks like you're.
Yep, sorry. I, connection is quite bad. I'm sorry about that.
Uh, Max, it's Lisa Middleton. Could you tell us about your civic involvement here in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you to be on the Measure J Commission?
Yes, uh, I, one, one of the reasons really I, I wanna be able to have, to be uh, to expand my civic involvements, which is why I applied to uh, to the Measure J. Uh, I've attended a lot of local events, uh, a lot of uh, uh, nonprofit organizations of uh, fundraisers, Boys and Girls Club and D I P, Desiree's Project or the Center, Mother's Kitchen, uh, but I wanna be able to do more uh, as somebody who just moved to the city about four, it's in twenty, twenty twenty, January twenty twenty. Uh, I, this is one that I wanna serve and I wanna continue to serve uh, in the coming years to other, you know, to be able to fulfill my civic involvements in other aspects as well. So if you ask me in a few years, I may hopefully give you all a bit more.
Thank you.
Bonjour, Max. The, Rhonda Hart here. Uh, Max, can you share with us your uh, uh, the technical skills that you feel, feel you're gonna bring to uh, aid Measure J's work?
Yes, uh, I, by trade, I'm a business analyst. So as a business analyst, I have a lot of technical, uh, when I say technical, more like in, uh, in from I T expertise, spreadsheets, Excel. I work for an insurance company, so we deal with a lot. And I build accounting systems for a lot of different insurance agencies. So I have that expertise and, and spreadsheets analyzing. And also my other uh, uh, technical uh, skills is be able to recommend to the, to the business, to the different agencies of what they are able, what they are able to have or able to get from, from basically their I T related uh, uh, I T offerings or, or budget offering. So based on what their budget, I'm able to analyze uh, what they can have uh, and really work well between our I T departments and our business uh, salespeople, uh, so team members. Uh, so I think that technical kind of relates to being able to provide, provide recommendations to the city council from what Measure J is, is receiving from all those different recommendations.
All right, thank you.
And really financial recommendations from like, I'd be able to analyze spreadsheets. Uh, we, we're gonna expect uh, and uh, making sure this is working as intended.
Hi, Max. It's Jeffrey.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Um, so you said you attended a few, you saw, watched a few of the meetings. What do you think about the direction that Measure J is? Where do you think the funds should be going towards? Do you have any suggestions on how the A commissions run or?
Yeah, what I thought was very interesting in the January meeting, uh, they discovered there was a, a, for example, like there's a law or a rule from the F F A, FAA that if you collect taxes, sales taxes from the airport, that you cannot use that fund anywhere else, but you have to really set aside and use it specifically for airport improvements or, or, or anything aviation related. And I thought that was a great funding, even though it's from two thousand seventeen. Uh, so and I really Christopher, uh, Chris from, I think, I believe is a financial, uh, uh, he, his way of really analyzing and, 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 and presenting the, the, the financials, I thought was, was excellent and, and I'm hoping to be able to uh, obviously attend, attend more in previous meetings. Uh, but all, so, uh, I make me also excited. Am I breaking up?
Yeah, but I think it might be us.
Yeah, it's okay. I think we got.
But we had it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Naomi?
Yeah, um, hi, Max. Good to meet you. Um, I just had a quick question that I'd love to hear specifically about your experience or how you use our city facilities. So, you know, it could be anything from trails, parks, community centers, the library, you know, how do you?
I, I think everyone. Sorry, sorry.
Or use our city infrastructure.
I, I think everyone can tell you I'm a, I'm an avid pickleball player. So I, I go to the Moth Park quite a bit. And um, uh, I, I see the improvements from Measure J, for example, the, the upgrade in the restrooms and the shades and and I have attended a, uh, uh, maybe one or two Measure J meetings to, to ask for additional courts or to improve on the existing courts we have. Uh, I have taken my uh, I, lots of walks in, in Ruth Hardy Park and, and so uh, and I live also in Essina and uh, and that's close to uh, Vista Chino and, you know, obviously goes to Cathedral City. So that, that road, I can always hear and, you know, what everybody's uh, comments about when it, you know, when it rains or, or, or when it's windy and that it closes and all of that. So I, I mean, I know what Measure J has uh, also, like what projects I, I believe we are gonna be getting. Obviously, whether it is improving on the pickleball courts or, or parks or whether it's fixing these, the, the main streets, like the Indian Canyon, obviously, or, or the Vista Chino. So uh, I believe those are gonna be coming and we're gonna be hearing about them and hopefully uh, Measure J will continue to have the funds and be able to tackle all those projects uh, one by, one by one.
Thank you.
To improve our city.
Are you interested in serving on any other commissions if not selected for Measure J?
Yes, uh, uh, anything to help the community, anything to be able to serve. Uh, whether it's village fest or parks and rec, uh, uh, staying in Measure J. I mean, it's, I, I, that's my intention. I wanna be able to serve more. I wanna be able to serve my city.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Max. That's our questions for today. Really appreciate it. Enjoy the rest of your trip. Uh, well, we'll be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Who's Andrew? We'll bring Andrew back in. I know, he's John Don't.
Hello, welcome. Welcome. Thank you so much. Um, so you're here with the Full City Council as well as our Measure J Chair Naomi Soto and our City Clerk Brenda Prey. And so we only have ten minutes for each interview. So just be succinct with your answers and we'll go through um, standard set of questions. Starting off with, why do you want to serve on the Measure J Commission?
You're on YouTube.
Yes, and you're on YouTube. It's streaming on YouTube.
Oh, no, that's fine. Um, so I helped Beaumont City Council on their financial, uh, finance and order commission for a year. Um, I have free time at the moment and I'd like to help the community. It's something I've done before. There's a lot of good projects that you guys are doing. Like to just help.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your interest in serving the city. Really appreciate it. What is your understanding of the role of the Measure J Commission?
So my understanding is it's a one percent sales tax that you guys imposed to help uh, with projects that will revitalize Palm Springs. So downtown uh, projects, parks, recreations, supply brigade, police, things like that. So my understanding is just basically helping guide that, uh, look at projects and, and pick ones that really benefit both the, the people and the, the future of the town.
Great, thank you.
Andrew, welcome. Andrew, and uh, uh, could you tell us about your civic involvement in Palm Springs and how that has prepared you to be on the Measure J Commission?
Um, so I've only just recently moved to Palm Springs within the last year, so I haven't had much chance to do much civic activity. So I'd like to start, start here, really. Um, like I've helped in other towns, I've said I've done more work back in England, but that would be a different set of rules and regulations than you guys do. Um, I've worked with we, uh, universities and their research groups. Um, so I found it, it really rewarding. Like it is good to put back and use some of the skills we've built up in, in private sector to come and help the public sector.
What brought you to Palm Springs?
Uh, my lovely sent to be wife. She found me wandering the desert out near Banning in Beaumont and what we took a much better place with air conditioning. Uh, I have to say, it is insanely hot. Eighty-seven degrees will kill a pacy Englishman. This town is exclusively English. I love it. It's the only thing that allowed me to get here today.
What technical skills uh, do you feel are, you bring to the table then with aid the commission and their work?
Um, I have decades of financial experience from uh, working in banks, small businesses. So I understand uh, a lot of financing, uh, accounting principles, um, like long-term investments, like short-term investments. Um, like as an example, Utah like sold a lot of the homeless crisis because they realized the cost of about thirty-three thousand dollars a year in every unhoused, in every unhoused person just through like police interactions, medical, things like that. Was the cost of about nineteen thousand to give them a low-cost housing. And like a social worker, that then improved it, got them back into like a productive member of society. Cost like saved them fourteen thousand a year and then generated tax revenue later. But that pro- like that project wasn't well received at the start and it took people explaining like the financial long-term effects of things rather than just we're helping people, it's helping people and you get a benefit out of it. So I think my understanding of those kind of things would be quite beneficial.
Excellent. So I'm very impressed you watched all the meetings back to twenty twenty, January twenty-two.
Got free time.
So in watching them, what do you think was done right or wrong or what would you add to it?
I think the one thing that I've quite enjoyed uh, watching it, it was like, I'll, I'll be honest, a lot to watch. Um, but it, it's good. Everybody has like a cohesive idea of what they want to do. Uh, like the committee works well together. I haven't seen any instances where it made me not want to join the committee. Um, so like, I don't think the committee's doing anything wrong. It's just more of the same and I'd like to add my expertise and help them.
Do you have any suggestions on where Measure J funds go in the future?
Um, it depends on, on what sort of projects were available. Uh, like I don't know the ins and outs of it now, so so making any judgments would be a little bit presumptuous. But uh, I think the current one you're looking at is like some upgrades to fire, uh, station and, and a park. Both of those are, are good. Like I didn't appreciate how good the Palm Springs parks were until I got here. Uh, because again, like it's not something I'd, I'd seen until I got here. Um, splash pads, that's a wonderful invention. Didn't know those existed. But, but it's those kind of parks and things. It's, it's inventive uses of the space. It's not just here's some grass. That's it. So, so I think it does well. Uh, the distribution from what I've seen of the funds, the majority of it is for downtown development. Uh, parks, the thing there's about thirty-six and thirty-four percent each. Um, the police and fire brigade is about uh, nine percent. So like it is well distributed. Most of it is actually for revitalizing the town and keeping people safe. So.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Andrew. Um, can you share a little bit? I know you just moved here, so I understand that's still kind of like exploratory, but how you utilize or experience our city facilities? So anything from trails, parks, the library, just what has been your experience with our city infrastructure?
So my experience would be a little bit unique and probably not the same as everybody else. Uh, I can't drive, like in your country. I've taken a few too many head injuries playing rugby. So I have a tendency to pass out in cars. So driving is not good. Um, I would say your public transport is not amazing.
That's a nice way to put it.
That is. Uh, it does confuse people if I download a bus and see them. They think that on some kind of venture, but look, it, it's like the city facilities themselves are fantastic and you are struggling with like an exceptional um, environmental like outlier with the temperature. Um, your museums are fantastic. The city council building is good. You've got a Palm Springs Airport as well, uh, utilized. The city structure is in a grid, which looks efficient. You've got your own local water sources, one off the mountains. So you're not gonna get too much problem from your river water shortage from the Colorado River in like ten years or so. But yeah, like Palm Springs seems to be built, built well. You're developing it good. My, my inability to drive shouldn't like be a downside. Once an hour would probably be good for your bus stops.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. Yes, which we approve funding for. Are you interested on serving on any other commissions if not selected for Measure J?
Yes, like if you can find a use for me, uh, like I'm quite happy to help. Because I've got probably about a year or so, maybe before some other things that need to be done. So if you've got stuff, even as a receptionist, they'll go past the bone and you can pretend you've got a British butler. I, I just wanna, like, I looked at some of the volunteering opportunities. You've got volunteer firefighter, police librarian. And I can't remember what the other one was, but so I came to volunteer for this.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much, Andrew. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, that's it. No, no, not yet. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Yes, yeah, you will. Thank you. Thank you.
Lauren online next.
Great.
So the next person is in person out.
The Lauren is online right now. Great. Let's bring her in. I'm gonna, just for the record, Lauren's interviewing right now, right? Yeah, so Lauren um, is paid as a part-time temp employee through the city. Um, and so I work with her, so I'm not legally required to recuse, but I'm just gonna step out and not participate in her interview. Um, I think it's a question of if she'd have to leave that position in order to serve on the commission. So um, the city attorney is looking into it. I flagged it for him.
Okay.
Um, since it hadn't been flagged yet. Uh, so, yes. All right, so thank, thank you so much. All right.
So anyone else called in here? Oh, it's beautiful.
I'm, I'm not actually, surprisingly not.
Hello, Lauren.
Hello, Lauren.
Oh, my gosh, where are you? It's beautiful.
From Costa Rica. No, really Costa Rica. I apologize. This is very much more casually than I would ever be conducting an interview. Um, but yes, here in Costa Rica, I, we actually couldn't get back to our hotel um, as we were planned, so um, enjoy.
You're doing pretty good if you're not in your swimsuit.
Yeah, well, well, Lauren, you, you know, um, all the players here. You've got the council, Naomi Soto, Chair Measure J is. Well, well, Lauren, you you know um all the players here. You've got the council, Naomi Soto, Chair Measure J is here, as well as our city clerk Brenda Prey. Uh, we're gonna just do a quick ten minutes. Um, Christie did recuse herself um just to while we figure out uh what the city attorney has to say about whether or not you can serve dual roles if you were selected. Um, so I will just, what? Oh, and you're on YouTube. I'm sorry, you're streaming on YouTube. I so we'll start off with, why do you want to serve on the Measure J Commission?
So I um grew up in Springs. I spent most of my career actually working in the restaurant industry. Um, I started waiting tables at a very popular restaurant downtown in two thousand five, um which was great until the crash happened in two thousand eight. And you know, downtown Palm Springs just completely collapsed. The tourism really collapsed. And Measure J was such an ingenious solution. Um, and it's incredible now, this many years forward to see um what improvements have been made and you know how much downtown has been revitalized and just how much um just how much good has really um come to the community through this fund. So um I would like to serve on the commission. Um, I also, you know, now um work for the Palm Springs Cultural Center and one of our most popular programs, Movies in the Park, makes use uh is, you know, takes place in the downtown park, which is another product of Measure J. So I've just, as a Palm Springs resident, seen um it's it's good use and would like to be a part of that.
Great, thank you. And I'm gonna ask Christie's usual question. What is uh, what do you see as the role of the Measure J Commission?
Um, essentially guiding the allocation of the funds um and also being in tuned with residents, um listening to their priorities and their needs and in, you know, encouraging folks to submit proposals for community initiated projects and um determining, you know, the best use of these funds.
Great, thank you.
Lauren, uh, can you tell us about your civic involvement here in Palm Springs, which is gonna be considerable?
Yes.
How that has prepared you uh for being on the Measure J Commission?
So I work part time um and for the office, for Councilmember Christie Holstidge's office. Um, and in that role, I do a lot of work with constituent services. So I am following up with residents um whenever they're facing issues or trying to access city services, um responding to them, working with them and um directing them to the appropriate staff members. I also spend a lot of time um researching policy, researching policy in other cities and also, you know, reading through each council agenda, um analyzing items, analyzing issues, preparing questions, um writing a lot of um basically policy briefs um for Councilmember Holstidge's consideration. And that, so that's been, that's the the majority of my work. Um, I've, I don't know if, you know, I've done quite a work on on a few different city council campaigns on a small level. I'm not quite sure if that is is relevant here. Um, but the bulk of my civic involvement is definitely um working for Councilmember Christie Holstidge.
Thank you.
Hey Lauren, Rhonda Hart here. Um, question on the technical skills that you bring to the table. What are those skills that you feel you would contribute most to for the working on the commission?
I I feel that in my, for my work as a program director at the Palm Springs Cultural Center, um I am good at reading budgets and um analyzing them. I think that I also have that. I have honed that skill working for um Councilmember Holstidge's office as well. Um, I also, you know, spend, I I it's I don't know if you necessarily call it a technical skill, but again, I um, you know, I've worked a lot with the public and have um throughout my time in Palm Springs, either through Councilmember Holstidge's office or through the Cultural Center. Um, you know, a lot of folks have a lot of interest in our programming, you know, most of our producers and partners are community members and through the farmers market as well, which we operate, which was my role before becoming program director. I was um managing and still I still oversee that Palm Springs Certified Farmers Market. Um, you know, I I I basically work a lot with individuals who have ideas and kind of can help them sort of zero in on on those ideas and become familiar with the process for moving things forward and actually putting things into action.
Excellent, thank you.
Hello, it's Jeffrey. How are you?
Hello.
So obviously you've um been paying a lot of attention to Measure J, so I'm curious as to what you think has been done right, what's been done wrong, what kind of direction do you see it going forward in the future, uh and what would you bring to that?
Um, I think that, you know, an issue that's raised a lot that I've also seen is the just the lack of communication with council and the difficulties posed by that. Um, you know, we saw that a lot with with the the question of how much was being allocated into the Community Initiated Projects Fund, which is an incredibly important issue. Um, so I think that that is is, you know, something that really needs to be resolved. The way I think I that from what I have seen, the commission really works together well. Um, so I don't necessarily see any any, I you know, I don't really have any criticism there. Um, but it just, I I think that continued and consistent outreach with community members and consistent um feedback from council or finding more ways to interpret, um, you know, to not interpret it to incor- incorporate um council participation.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, um, hi Lauren, thanks for joining us from Costa Rica. Um, I have a question around kind of your experience with our city facilities, um especially as a longtime resident. Can you share how you utilize or understand the state of our city facility? So anything from trails, parks, the library, kind of what's been your experience with our city infrastructure?
I am really thrilled to see um the funding for the library um moving forward. I think that that's gonna be exceptional and the city really deserves um a a high tech library. I love our library. It's one of my favorite places. I've been going there since I was about five years old, but um that 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 I'm happy to see that in motion. I would also say that area surrounding the library, um the pavilion and the leisure center have not changed since I went to summer camp when I was also, you know, a small child. And, you know, we use the pavilion every year um for the indoor Palm Springs Certified Farmers Market, which we're very grateful for. I mean, it's with the the market would not be able to operate year round otherwise. However, um I think that all of our community centers, the leisure center, the pavilion, the Demuth Community Center, um James or Jesse could really use a substantial investment of funds, um so that these facilities reflect, um, you know, Palm Springs as as a world class city.
Great, thank you so much. And then just the one final question is, if you, are you interested in serving in any other commissions at this time?
Um, I I might, I would probably be interested in Parks and Rec.
Okay. All right, thank you so much, Lauren, and enjoy the rest of your vacation.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, bye bye.
I know, I know.
Is there?
Yeah.
So our rest of us must of them must be in person then? The last two. David Parker and. Yeah. No, we're gonna take the break.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. If the people are that early. I don't know what to say. Um, no, the next, our our HSB doesn't start till twelve thirty, so if they're that early, that's really early. Hi, David.
Hi.
Uh, so we've got the full city council here as well as our Measure J Chair Naomi Soto and our city clerk Brenda Prey. And we've got ten minutes and that's it. So we do ask that you keep your question, your answers succinct. We're gonna go through standard questions that we've asked everyone and just so you know, this is being streamed on YouTube.
Okay.
So I will start with, why do you want to serve on the Measure J Commission?
Um, well, I want to be of service. Um, I then retired for about two years and so I wanted to get more involved um uh in the city. Um, I'm a retired banker, so the the dollars and cents aspect uh makes sense to me. And um I just, I just want to help out.
Thank you so much for your interest in serving the city. Appreciate it. My question is, what's your understanding of the role of the Measure J Commission?
Um, a commu- community oversight, um community, if you will, commission to ensure that uh the dollars funded through Measure J are spent in the way that the community initially intended. Um, and and make sure that that sort of happens transparently through the sunset of the measure.
Thank you.
If it happens.
Thank you.
David, welcome. Thank you. Can you tell us about your civic involvement in Palm Springs and how that's prepared you uh to be on the Measure J Commission?
Sure, um. My husband and I bought a house here in twenty sixteen, but uh only recently became full time at the end of twenty twenty one. I'll do the math. Um, and since then, I've done a couple of things. I I am involved in the Oasis Del Sol, a good organization. Um, serving as treasurer for that group right now and also volunteer at the animal shelter uh two days a week, sometimes more if they need the help and I can swing it. Um, and then uh I also wa- did the um Community Police Academy uh last fall and I think that ended right around Thanksgiving, which was a great experience, by the way. You guys are probably allergic to that.
So David, Rhonda Hart here. Uh, what uh technical skills that you possess, you feel will help aid the commission's work?
You mean technical skills relative to the commission?
Just the technical skills that you possess that you uh you can bring to the table.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, I I I um, I think right before I retired, well, right before I retired, I was a senior vice president of a uh the ATM channel for Wells Fargo. So ran that channel across the country and a significant nine figure budget, annual budget to make sure the channel was operational. So bringing that sort of large budget experience, um uh making sure that things came in on budget weren't over budget, obviously, and then if there are any deficiencies, how we were going to utilize that run rate, so we don't u- use, don't lose it uh during next budget cycle. Don't have any experience in municipal finance. It's all been corporate uh related, so I think that would probably be the biggest thing. Um, in addition to that, uh I led a team of about just under sixty people in order to to do that. Um, so I have a lot of relationship skills um through my career uh during that roughly just under forty years.
How'd you choose Palm Springs for retirement?
Oh, just like everybody, the weather, the fun, uh the scenery, yeah, that's that's it. Yeah.
Excellent, yeah.
Hi, David.
Hi. How's it going?
Good. So David, my neighborhood, my neighbor.
Oasis Del Sol, yeah.
Really representing, good work.
I recruit well.
Yeah.
So you, so you haven't been to see it a long time, but what do you think some of the Measure J funds, would you like to see improvements in our city?
Um, uh, this is more of a standard answer to the question than a specific one, but I I think that we, that the commission needs to, or the city needs to do more PR around um the projects were funded by Measure J. And I'll be perfectly frank, I didn't, I didn't know which ones were funded by Measure J except for when we had our streets repaved. And I think I had seen a little sign or or maybe it was mentioned to me that the uh street paving was, I think, paid through through Measure J, but that was it. So so I think um doing more PR so that people in general, like you here, you know, know what's happening, so that does become a um laying the groundwork to to make it permanent or to to renew it when it expires in twenty thirty six, is what I would say.
Thank you. Um, David, Naomi, Miss Pinker. Um, can you share how you utilize or understand the state of our city facilities? So that can be anything from trails, parks, community centers, library. How do you experience our city infrastructure?
Um, probably the the most common one for me would be the hiking trails, um uh the Tuckus Canyon, one uh Indian canons. Um, uh, and and I did the um Community Police Academy, so that, you know, the the training center at the police department um and the involved right along that that went along the path. Um, but that's, that's pretty much it. The rest is, you know, um patronizing local businesses, um et cetera, but but that would be, and and of course, business of the library, yeah.
Great, great. Okay, are you interested in serving on any, excuse us, um, are you interested in serving on any other commissions if not selected for Measure J?
Yes, potentially, yes.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
You applied for uh the alternate on the administrative appeals.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Cause that sounded exciting.
Not as fun.
It was exciting. No, it it would, I thought it would be a good use of sort of my relationship uh pe- people relationship skills. Oh, um, and so I thought that might dovetail. So, oh, excellent, yeah.
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it and enjoy the rest of your day and we will be in touch.
That's all.
Thank you.
Good to meet you. Thank you. Good to meet you too. Thanks.
I'm sure this, I'm TV, the TV stations, the email.
All right, so then.
So the last person was Jack Newby.
Great, let's bring him in. Now we can eat lunch. So long, three and a half hour slot here. Yeah, but we are ending just on time. Great job. So hard to do. Well, it's also a fairness thing, right? Like giving everyone only ten minutes, you know? Yeah, absolutely. Nice to see you. Uh, we've got the full city council here, plus our Measure J Chair Naomi Soto and our city clerk Brenda Brenda Prey. Uh, so we only have a set ten minutes for these questions and just to let you know, this is a streaming on YouTube at the moment. Um, so we'll get through those those questions and then that's it. So we'll start off with, why do you want to serve on the Measure J Commission?
Well, I served on the Human Rights Commission, um it was probably about five years ago that my turn ended. Um, I previously served on commission uh in Signal Hill on the Planning Commission. Uh, and I really wanted to get back and uh I could do work for the city of Palm Springs. The Measure J Commission has um always been of interest to me since I passed. Uh, and I think it's a very valuable part of what the city does, so and it's something I think with my uh background and experience I've had in uh construction projects uh and that sort of thing that I could, uh my experience uh and background in commissions and in those sorts of projects could be beneficial.
Great, thank you. Hi, Jack. Good to see you. Welcome. Thank you for all that you've done for our city and our community. Really appreciate it. Um, my question is, what is your understanding of the role of the Measure J Commission?
Um, the role of the Measure J Commission is to uh review projects and uh provide budgetary support for projects. And as I've seen and watching some of the meetings, um many times it's projects that are also being run through, for instance, Parks and Recreation um or through uh the um building and improving the roads and transportation system in Palm Springs. Uh, so there's a lot of um need to make sure that the the what the Measure J Commission is doing and the funds that it's using uh are for capital improvement projects. Uh, and that's what Major Measure J was passed, passed for initially. Um, and I I know from seeing some of the most current meetings that there's been a little bit of stray from that and the idea is to bring it back. So and I think that's very important because it uh increases the credibility of the Measure J Commission. Um, so to uh provide funding for capital improvement projects and to work with the community in doing capital improvement projects that they file important uh and submit to the commission for review.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jack, can you talk about uh some of your civic involvement here in Palm Springs and how that has helped prepare you to be on the Measure J Commission?
Sure, um as I mentioned before, I spent several years on the Human Rights Commission and so I think that uh helped as the chair for the Human Rights Commission and vice chair. I think one of the things I was proud of with my work on that commission is the training that occurred for all of the members or all of the staff, the city of Palm Springs uh on cultural humility, and that was something that had not been done before. Um, and I had some resources that I was able to bring to bear, um and uh the city manager at the time, David Reddy, uh was very interested in it, so everything from police and fire to uh line staff were able to participate in that. Uh, so I think that was something that I was able to uh bring forward, educate the the tuition about, educate the um leadership of the city about and to bring it to fruition. Um, also, I'm very familiar with the city of Palm Springs, working for over ten years with the.
Also, I'm very familiar with the city of Palm Springs, working for over ten years with the Mysl Senior Center as Director of Development. I was on the Board of Directors of the Desert Business Association. I helped found the Desert Pride Community Center, which later kind of. It's hard to explain how it happened, but is now the. Gay lesbian center here in Palm Springs. And I've worked on several other organizations, working with. As the first Director of Public Policy for Desert AIDS Project, and I worked for Desert AIDS Project for four years. At the time I started, we were talking with Congresswoman Bono, who was our representative here. I felt that it was important that we engage in conversations with all of the funders for both Riverside and San Bernardino, which at that time was. The EMA or Eligible Metropolitan Area that was providing. Funds for the Ryan White Care Act through this area. So. I was able to build relationships with everyone, Republican and Democrat. And to meet with them or their staff, one of the things I'm particularly proud of is, right, an extraordinary list was the. Chair of the House Appropriations Committee, Jerry Lewis. And initially, he wasn't very receptive, and as we worked with him and educated him about the issue. We met with him personally every time going to Washington DC, and that's kind of a rare occurrence. You're used to doing that kind of work in DC, so. I think I have a broad range of experience, the work that I'm doing now. I've worked, we work with and are part of the initial co-communities commission. Which provides funding not only to the Johnston Center, but there's a direct powers authority. Or their work with the police and fire departments in those communities. And so I work with the city managers. And representatives from those various groups in. Bringing together to the co-communities commission, which is made up of city council members from. Indian Wells Con Desert Ranch Mirage to bring projects to them for consideration. So I think. That I have a pretty broad range of experience and understanding of what. The issues are facing Palm Springs right now at the time.
Thank you. Impressive.
So a lot of great background qualifications or experience. What do you feel are the the qualif- key qualifications that you bring to the table? Those skills that will aid in Measure J Commission? My background and my my initial training was as a attorney. And what that does is teach you, hopefully, to look at all sides of an issue. And to try and understand. How an issue, you know, can impact. Different sides and how you can work with them to come to a resolution. Also, with my experience that I've had, I think one of the concerns and I think issues that are impacting the commission are. And all cities, as I understand it, have met with this problem. There's a huge. Kind of disconnect between what people thought a project was going to cost and what it's costing. And so looking at how, again, the commission. Works with some of the other departments in the city. Where they have projects that interact together. And how you can anticipate that and what you need to anticipate when. That happens. And as I understand, it's going to be happening for a while. And hopefully, it'll go back down to normal, but. You know, I've seen a project of my own go from a hundred and sixty thousand to two hundred and seventy five thousand. And that's just remodeling a couple bathrooms, so. I'm aware of. Having to set, helping to set priorities and understanding that maybe we. May have to adjust those priorities based on the realities of what's happening out there in the world.
Thank you.
Excellent. We talked, you wrote a lot about that Measure J Commission. So what do you think's been done right and wrong, and what do you think should be done going forward?
I actually think for the most part, Major Jake has been. You know, and I really, I know that the sun, that. It's a little early to talk about it, sun setting, but it's not too early to start thinking about how to. I think continue it because I think it would be a significant impact to the city of Palm Springs and its ability to. Fund capital improvement projects throughout the city without those funds from Major J. And in fact, I think Palm Springs has taken the lead because I've seen many other cities in the valley do the same thing. That's a good idea. So I want to see. I want to see part, you know, of what the commission can do in terms of, and the city can do in terms of letting people educating the community about Measure J. Also, it's capital improvement. It's done a lot of its job that it was intended to do in terms of downtown. If capital improvement projects can help, for instance, North Palm Springs in terms of providing that impetus for. Private developers to come in that. They're not going to have to pay for all the infrastructure that some of the infrastructure can be covered through major J funds. I think that's a real opportunity to spread. The impact and the value of Major, Major J throughout the entire city. So I think that's something that is really a consideration for the commission to look at. And to begin developing and even. Provide, you know, writing a grant, I've written grants for years, but writing a grant isn't easy and conceiving of it and. What do you do with the budget and what do you do with the budget? What comes in is a lot less than what you anticipated. And so I think providing some trainings and education for citizens in. The north end of Palm Springs on this process of how they can bring community projects to their community to help take pride. In their community that they're, that the city is taking, is paying attention. And they have a hand in that, in in driving that and and in seeing the results.
Great, thank you. Do you want to share a little bit about how you utilize or understand the state of our city facilities? So anything from trails, community centers, libraries? What has been your experience with our city infrastructure?
Palm Springs is one of the oldest cities in the valley. And I think it's facing the same issues that a lot of older structures are facing in terms of. Americans with disability act compliance. I think the library is long past due for refurbishment or rebuilding. And the plan for, I think, incorporating it into the College of the Desert Campus is. Probably no longer existent. So I think, you know, that's one of the, that's one of the places, I think. Also, I'll be honest with you, roads and streets. East Palm Canyon is both the introduction and the exit for a lot of people coming into and out of. Palm Springs, and I use it a lot. It's a washboard. And I think I hear a lot of complaints from people, not only about that. Main thoroughfare, but some of the other streets. So I think paying some more attention and prioritizing the street projects. In the city is also very important. Plus, I know that, you know, we have our parks and recreation, and again, being an older city, there are, there's. Projects that need to refurbish. Our parks and our recreational facilities to bring them up to par. They may have been state of the art thirty or forty years ago. Today, they need work, so I think there. There's a whole banquet of opportunity. And maybe a few dishes that we can, the the commit, the commission can work on. But I I think those are some of the ones that can provide for me initially.
Great, thank you. Brenda, it's our time?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it, Jack.
You also, the time I appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you.
You appreciate the work.
Thank you. So Naomi, before we go into a recess, if you have any comments that you want to share with us, now is the time because it does have to be an open session.
Oh, I see. Well, one, just thank you for inviting me to participate. We have, I think, some really solid, solid candidates. You know. A range from financial experience to operational kind of strategy experience. So that's really exciting. We can have kind of a range of perspectives. The motivation behind my question is really making sure that. On the commission, we have people who are using our cities in different ways, who are. Utilizing different kinds of businesses who move in our city in different ways. Because they have a really unique perspective as to kind of what might some gaps be. And I think previous commissions or, you know, any, any body who kind of. Moves and lives in the same ways, it's not going to be able to truly understand. Investment needs of areas of the cities that they're not using as well. So I would just really underscore that. And but I really appreciated the preparation of all the candidates. They really kind of understood. How they either through kind of their own personal experience, wanting to improve some community public spaces. Or even just how their own professional experience would be valuable, so. Just a really solid group of people, and I'm looking forward to working with them.
Okay, let me ask you more.
Go ahead.
Just, um, do we have any other candidates I saw?
There's a young lady, Juan Hiccup, her name is Julie. She actually applied for the, she's not in front of you. She applied for the Appeals Board. But she's saying she meaning to, she was meaning to apply for Measure J. And I don't, I don't, you know, and I told her we didn't have a slide. I don't have any openness, so it's kind of up to you all if you want to bring. Her at the end of this, or if you even want to address it because it was not. To apply for the Appeals Board, you know, but she told us today, oh, no, I apply for Measure J.
Cause Julie Montante, so I just ran into her at the hall, and so she said that, she said that they told her that she could come in in a. Interview for Measure J today. That's not the case for, from the clerk's office, just to make sure.
Yeah, her application, yeah, her application is for the. Somebody else applied for online, they applied for like planning or something, but they mean, and they were meaning to apply for arts, you know, so. I, you know, I guess those applications.
I want to be fair, but we've got a really strong panel of candidates for. For this board.
For Measure J.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll explain to her, I'll tell her and let her know that we don't have.
If others have other. We should just make sure, I would love to know what the website looks like, because it seems like we're having this mistake a lot where people are unsure of what they applied for, they. Clicked the wrong one, and so it seems like a pattern and not like an applicant's fault. So I just want to be clear, like. You know, we want to make sure people are getting into the buckets of commissions they're interested in.
They get a confirmation.
They get a copy of, and you know, we do have her application where she actually selected the appeals board, so but we are, you know, working to move toward a new software with. Describe that would totally revamp what that application process looked like and what the application looked like, because it does look. It's jammed up. When I look at your application, it it's like. Everything, everything is hard, it's hard to follow. So, you know, just in all fairness. You know, it it has happened a few times since I've been here, so.
Yeah, okay.
Whatever, you know, whatever.
Is there openings on appeals?
We already, we already, that's what we've already.
Already pulled.
Yeah.
Unless you got the two alternates, were the only thing that was open on appeals were two. And I think you have.
When I stay, it goes to this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We really don't have anything other than sustainability that she could serve on.
Okay, well.
So I'll talk to her.
Yep, great.
How you guys going?
Okay, great. So let's, yeah, let's just finish your question. Yeah, so we're losing, let me get to the right paperwork again. So we're losing Jim and Sid. And then Linda is an incumbent, and it says she's interested in serving, but we're not interviewing her, was she not?
We didn't do any incumbent.
So we're just not, sometimes in the past we have and sometimes we haven't. So could you just speak to sort of the expertise or the roles that we're losing on the commission and what gaps we might need to fill and thinking through what. Skill from qualifications are needed? So. Jim Gazan has been on the commission two full terms. And so he really. Kind of has that deep experience around kind of how the commission has functioned in multiple iterations. He also, and Sid too, have really good experience as to. Working with the city council, working with staff, just kind of the interactions of the commission with other kind of city processes. So people who have that, who are kind of comfortable with that, understand. You know, the bureaucracy and timeline of making sure everyone who needs to see something can see it. And give us that feedback. I think those two things would be the biggest. Sid also has, he had previously been on the Parks and Rec Commission. And I think possibly even served on the library. Jim has really good experience kind of with monitors and we can kind of the different stakeholders in the city. Who utilize our city public spaces a lot. So that would be another kind of unique experience that both of them have. Okay, thanks. That's helpful. And then any other, Naomi and I have served on a board together, and so when we do recruitment for that board, we think of like our financial skills needed or. Right, so do you have, that's really helpful. So it sounds like we're losing like the deep city experience in the longer term. Do you have feedback about, you know, financial or whatever, like actual. Qual- skills might be needed on the commission right now?
Yeah, I would say some financial, financial acumen would be really helpful for sure. And even like the built environments or infrastructure. Development kind of experience as to kind of how long that takes, how much things are going to cost, all that kind of. Discomfort and questions would be the two that I would think could be really valuable. And a few people have mentioned this, but like interaction with the public, community engagement has been a huge focus for the commission. And so people who welcome public input. Understand the value of it, know how to kind of bring that back, you know, six months later, when we're talking about that issue again. That would be all really valuable.
Great.
I should mention that it's been, you've had a shortage of commissioners for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we thought we were going to be slimming down, so. There was, it hadn't been built in a couple of years, so and because of that. You know, thinking ahead a year from now, you know, quite a few of us are going to term out, right?
You and, you and Brian.
Me and Brian, yeah. So it'll really just be. Mark and Linda.
Yeah.
Right, who are still going to be on the commission two years from now. So thinking ahead, you know, your seniority is going to really shift. So having people who have that experience with the city is going to be really important.
Okay, well, next year, Sid or Jim could come back.
That's true. If they did, well, that's another question of if we. How often we bring back. The same people and not.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah. Mark was on the original Measure J, actually.
Yeah, he's somebody who's returned.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, kind of like. The long-term. Sustainability of leadership on the creation. And then hence the documentation, right? Because people are not always going to know what happened.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. So at this time, we'll be in a recess until twelve thirty. Thank you all so much. So at this time, we'll be in a recess until 12:30.
Calling the meeting to order. Thank you so much for being here. The first question we have for you, and this is on YouTube streaming. First question we have for you is why do you want to serve on the HSPV Commission?
I recently attended the Preservation Matters Symposium and found it very energizing. And sitting through some of the sessions, it occurred to me that I have a long history of working with this. That gives me a set of skill, a skill set that it seems to me to fit perfectly in that I might be able to contribute to the preservation of Palm Springs Historic Sites.
Thank you so much for your interest in serving the city. What is your understanding of the role of the commission or the board?
Well, there is an advisement and so portion to this, but there is also the other, the other matter of actually looking at applications and making an informed decision on whether or not they conform to the standards and rules that are set up and must be applied fairly abundantly across the board to different applicants.
Great, great. Thank you.
Jeffrey incredibly impressive background that you have. In terms of civic involvement in Palm Springs, are there specific initiatives or programs that we've been involved in that will help you? Should you be selected to our Historic Site Preservation Board?
I think the basic answer is no. I retired in 2020. There was a lockdown I noted here. And the one thing that I have become involved in is Desert X, the international site-specific organization, which again, I found to be a very positive and interesting experience.
I'm certain with your background and getting involved in most recent programs, we've had, we've had an opportunity to start to know many of the stakeholders in preservation here in Palm Springs areas. Tell us about the relationships with Corbin and how you think those would help you work.
I am very slow on the start with that, to be quite frank, and I'm only beginning to make some connections with colleagues that I knew before coming out here, but basically via email, the electronic things. The, with Sunnylands, for instance, and, and also the art museum, the Palm Springs Art Museum. As you can see, my, my bias is towards the arts and architecture.
All right. Excellent. A question about qualifications, the qualifications that you bring to the table that you think will help contribute to the commission's work, what do you think those are?
Well, I've had experience in a wide variety of issues and reviews that over the course of my nearly 30 years working for the city of Los Angeles. Again, I'm not surprised you're asking the same question to everybody, that, that standard operating procedure. But I have worked with the Los Angeles Cultural Heritage Commission, which does, basically, it's a mirror commission of, in my understanding of what this board does. But I've also worked with, I, the city's Mills Act Program, for instance, which again, I note is part of, I've seen the Mills Act mentioned in different contexts here. I also am very involved in the actual preservation methods, having gone through an 1850 Victorian mansion in Los Angeles restoration and then spent five years working on Frank Lloyd Wright's Hollyhock House. And so I think one of the things I bring to the table is when a plan is presented, I can look at it and know what questions to ask and how to, how to tease out the information that is necessary in order to make the best decision for that particular application. I also have worked with a lot of agencies outside the Department of Cultural Affairs, including the National Park Service and the Frank Lloyd Wright Building Conservancy, at which I am on the executive committee there and have been for a number of years. And in, in that particular capacity, again, we're looking at preservation issues focused entirely, of course, on the work of Frank Lloyd Wright. But it's a nice, it, it, there's a nice sort of adjacency to mid-century modern, which some people would argue wouldn't be what it is today without Frank Lloyd Wright. So those, I think, cover some of the major qualifications that I think are, are important. I also have experience in writing and copy editing and have done national historic landmark applications. So I have a, another parallel track in terms of the experience that again, I think helps to inform any decision that comes before the door. Maybe not directly, but the indirect is often as critical to the discussion. And, and, and again, I've, I've run grants panels for the city of Los Angeles, which is very much a collaborative and a discussion oriented process, reading the applications and then, much like this, talking about it and figuring out whether it's deserving or not, and again, how much it's, is required of that particular application in terms of funding.
That's fantastic. Well, I think your writing skills would come in very handy. We've seen some incredible documents produced by this commission that, you know, documents the work that's coming from the commission and the history of the project. So that's a good skill to bring to the table.
Have you, have you seen any of the meetings? Have you watched them?
I did watch a Zoom meeting. It, it was an interesting meeting. There were, there wasn't much way of discussion on this one. I've seen that everything just went very smoothly, which was nice, but yes.
But you went to Preservation Matters.
I did go to Preservation Matters.
Good overview of players and issues.
Exactly. And that, that's what sparked my interest and I thought about it for a while and thought, okay, I'm retired. Is this what I want to do? Because this is going to require commitment and time. And it just seemed like the more I thought about it, the better the better it felt to say, okay, yes, I, I will put my hat in the ring. I'll make an application. We'll see what happens. You know.
You certainly got impressive background for this commission. So, yeah.
What's our time left, Rama?
You have eight minutes and 35 seconds.
Thank you. Do you have other questions? I have one if I can. How you balance preservation and development and how you would play that role on the commission? I saw you noted that in your application.
I mean, that is the question that is really at the heart of almost any developers, at the heart of any developer's request. And for instance, there was a time in my early career where I was such a hardline preservationist, if you will permit me to use that term, that that it, it, it just overrode any other consideration. As time went along and other projects came along, because Barnstall Art Park is a twelve-acre city park in the center of a thirty-six-acre plot of four city blocks, which was all owned by the same person at one time, who was also to be developed as this art colony. Well, it was sold off by the heirs, et cetera. And now we have a, we have the park. We have a UNESCO World Heritage Site and we have a buffer zone. There is still a, about a ten-acre parcel that is now a mini mall that is being sold and developed. And I worked with both our council office and our, our Cultural Heritage Board, which has to do with the architecture and the way it's laid out. And this was also, there were two other proj, there are three other projects in this area, right, adjacent to us that I spent a lot of time working with developers. And the interesting thing is that I found that, that it was, developers come to the table, generally speaking, with, you know, their, their perfect scenario, knowing that they're going to have to do some number crunching and change the square footage and, and make some adjustments. So it's, the way one approaches it is to try to figure out where some of those adjustments are already in their mind and then work in that way around it.
Thank you. I'm so sorry we're out of time.
Well, as you can see, I could go on and on.
Yeah, it's a great place to.
Yes. Thank you so much for your interest in serving this city and on this board. We so appreciate it and thank you for coming in today.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to leave while she's out here for some, or would you like? Happy to do it. I'm happy to not. To you. You're in charge.
I'll do this one.
Okay. Hello, welcome.
Welcome. So, just saying, the mayor just had to step out for a minute. We'll save it. She'll be back. And I'm Jeffrey Bernstein, and this is on, on YouTube. We only have ten minutes, so we're going to ask you questions, the same questions that we've asked everybody.
Very good.
So I will start out with, why do you want to serve on HSPB?
Um, I, I'd like to volunteer because I think I can add to the committee. As you read in my resume, I, my family came here in nineteen fifty-seven. And I, the home that my grandparents bought was built by Belden Christ. And I, I sold a home in the tennis club area, built by E. Williams, Eddie Williams Stewart. E. Stewart Williams, sorry. And, and, and I sold the Del Marco Hotel and the Holiday House. I was a kid, ten years old when we moved here. So I've been all over the desert. I know practically every street in town. And having been in real estate, going on forty-seven years, I've been in a number of homes. And I've sold Alexandra Homes. I have a Mizelman Home. And so I just, I think I can possibly contribute something to the history. And I pay a lot of attention to detail and, and research, even in my work. And so I'd like, I'd like to be interested in supporting the committee.
Thank you. What's your understanding of the role of the Commission for the Board?
My understanding is that properties are submitted for review to see if they meet the qualifications for historical preservation or designation. And I mean, that's basically my understanding, that you receive a packet and you review it and you discuss it. And, yeah.
Thank you.
Fortunately, I wasn't opted in, but I have tried to be on a committee in the past. And I thi, I think it's important to have local, longtime residents involved. And especially, I noticed on your list that I'm the only candidate for, for District Three. And I have lived in District Three for sixty-six years. So, yeah, my grandparents bought their retirement home at fourteen forty-two via Merilla stuff. And I've stayed in that neighborhood my entire life.
Are there cultural organizations or other activities that you try to be involved in?
I'm, I've been active in our local real estate board for a number of years on many committees, membership and, you know, grievance and professional standards. And I, I'm a member of the American Legion and that property is, hopefully will be approved for a restoration very soon. And so I had a situation where my mother had advanced Alzheimer's. So from two thousand nine until she passed in two thousand fourteen, I was in her family home in the Springs Country Club for, for a number of years. But I, I got involved with the Alzheimer's Association and I'm kind of an expert now.
It's hard weighted to it.
Yeah, it counts on. And really, not sure what else I can add. Just that, I'm, I consider myself a helpful person, so I would enjoy helping out. You know, putting the puzzle, pieces of the puzzle together to come to the right decision.
Well, I think you get bonus points for being in District Three. And I say that with a biased perspective.
Yeah.
So what, what area of service did, where, did you serve? You said you're American, American Legion member.
I'm not a military. My, my dad.
Ah, excellent.
World War Two.
Oh, beautiful. What branch?
Navy.
Oh, excellent. Good for him.
Yeah, and he worked, after that, he went on to work in the missile program. And so he, for years and years, was a civil servant in the missile program, including Vandenberg and.
Excellent. Well, we're glad you're here. Thank you. You, you've talked about the history and real estate and being involved in a lot of historic homes. What qualifications do you feel you're going to be able to bring to the Historic Site Preservation Board to, to boost the, the work on the board?
Well, again, I, I enjoy research and I think it's important to look at each submission as to whether it's still original or mostly original. And maybe search back to find out what, what was added on and what maybe needs to be reversed. And so I'm pretty, I'm a very quick study, so to speak, and I'm pretty analytical. So I think, I think I can help in that way.
Excellent. Thank you.
What do you think are some of the things HSPB has gotten right or wrong? What are some of the things you, some of the things that HSPB had done right and wrong? And what do you think the challenges are going forward?
I was watching Zoom over the last couple of years. And I, I think Mrs. Huff did a terrific job of chairing. And I like the way that she managed the Zoom meetings and, and she's a really outstanding chairperson. Yeah.
How do you balance preservation and development? How do you see those issues?
Development and preservation, I, I think it's really important to, because we have such a blended city as far as building booms and busts, you know. Again, I think the importance of the historical board is, or committee is to look at, look at the actual project and look at the surrounding areas. But in, in my application, I mentioned that I would, as far as new development, I would really like to see a more low-density movement and fewer high-rises. I think high-rises are important downtown with commercial hotels and that sort of thing. But I'm just hoping it doesn't enter into the single-family arena because it would destroy our privacy and, and that's important here.
Thank you. All right.
I asked you a question.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Susan. I really appreciate it.
We only have ten minutes.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm sure that, if you know, if you choose me, that's fine. I'm happy to work hard and support and attend every meeting. I'm here all the time. In many years.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little shy.
You're shy. Don't worry. You did great. Thank you.
For your hard work.
Thanks, everyone. I'm on baby watch right now, so. It was nothing, but.
That's okay. Everything all right?
Yeah, she's fine. But mom called. But, but yeah, she calls. I'm like, yeah, it's her baby. She's fine. Hello. Hi, welcome. Hey, James. So, James, you have the full city council here and our city clerk, Brenda Pre. So we have ten minutes to go over some standard questions that we're asking all of the candidates. And so once those ten minutes are up, that's the, that's it. So keep your answers succinct. And we are going to just start off with, why do you want to serve on the Historic Preservation Board?
Well, as an architect, my most, most of my experience has been restoration. I've taken abandoned buildings, got them on international duty historic places. I restored buildings and in the past incorporated building, parts of buildings into new buildings in order to keep the estimate. Like one, there is a building, Louis Sullivan in Chicago was doing downfield stock exchange. I got the record, allow me make some copies of part of the cast, and I reused those aspano panels in one of the, one of the things. So I, I feel that history is an important part and we're an ongoing part of that history.
What's your understanding of the role of the Board?
I don't have that much of an understanding. I'm an open-minded person. I've worked with a lot of different people. And I want to be part of a team. Again, I've always worked. And it's sort of strange now that I'm retired that time seems to be different than when I was working.
Thank you. And it looks like, at least the application we have, it says that some of the questions were skipped. Do you know, you skipped some of the questions when you filled it out? Or I can ask the city clerk too if that's on our end. Okay, thank you.
James, can you tell us a little bit about your architectural background and the kinds of buildings that you put together and done and some of your experience here in Palm Springs?
Well, my experience in Palm Springs is none. I retired out here just two years ago. And again, my experience has been, like I said, I did some developing. I have a son who's a portrait painter and a sculptor in Florence, Italy. He's come and worked on one project for me and we would call capitals and profiles of different American artists. And a project that was called Artist Square. And other ones that I've done, I brought some pictures. I didn't know exactly what I'm going to make any difference.
Yeah, sure. Happy to see them. We do only have ten minutes total for the interview. Want to make sure we answer your question, answer our question.
It's not copies.
Thank you.
I, in coming here and we're wanting to work on the Historic Site Preservation Board, what are some of the connections that you have that will allow you to work effectively with the community too?
I, I don't know if I have any real connection with people. I have an open mind. I've always worked with groups. And so I'm, I'm a very flexible person. I don't know. I don't have any real connection. I have a son living in LA, a story producer, but that's.
So coming to the Commission or the Board with your background in building and design, what qualifications do you feel can, will best, you can best contribute to the Board's work?
Well, I, I know how buildings were constructed. Going back, I, you got Frank Lloyd Wright's old son. I worked with Unity Temple in that, you know, park, on the restoration of that church. So I mean, again, like I said, I, I've had a business where I was doing inspections of existing buildings. I probably looked at twenty-five thousand different buildings, houses, commercial buildings, and did structural reports and evaluations.
And engineering perspective? Okay, thank you.
Have you seen any of the HSPB meetings on Zoom?
No, I haven't.
And have you, did you go to the Preservation Matters Symposium that they did recently? Oh, okay. Well, I mean, you have a lot of great background to get involved with the Historic Site Preservation. Do you, do you have an understanding of what the historic, what the preservation means to Palm Springs though?
Well, yes. Again, I, I guess to me it's much more modern. I'm used to buildings that are hundred fifty, two hundred years old. And so it's, it's interesting to look at modern, more modern buildings that they still have a historic value to them.
Yeah, yeah. It's sort of key to Palm Springs in a lot of ways. So that, I agree.
How do you balance, in your mind or in your work, preservation with development?
I think the two go together. I think, again, to me, the past is an ongoing segment of life and life goes on and we become part of it for a short period of time and then other people. And I think the history is important to keep there, the craftsmanship and the styles that different architects did is important.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And then, James, just a final question. Are you interested in serving on any of our other boards and commissions?
I don't know that much about, about it. My wife is a mystery writer and so I've been helping her. And she writes about historic Chicago back in eighteen eighty, so I'm.
Wow, that's very exciting.
Is your role to solve the mystery or create the crime?
Mine is to give her details of a historic context.
Oh, cool. Good to hear. Nice. Well, thank you so much, James. Really appreciate it and appreciate your interest. And we'll let you know. We'll give you back your photos as well. Thank you for sharing them. It's really cool. Beautiful work. And we'll let you know, we'll give you back your photos as well. Thank you for sharing them. It's really cool. You know, floor. Thank you.
Appreciate your interest. Thank you.
Thank you so much, James.
Yeah, I'm glad you picked Palm Springs for retirement. It happens that way sometimes.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, I don't need that back. Did you wanna keep these?
Oh, no, no, it's okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Your next person is on Zoom. So we can, Kurt, join us on Zoom. He's there. Todd. No, Todd for this. Hi Kurt. Can you, Kurt, are you there?
There I should be. Good afternoon.
Hi Kurt, uh, we are here with the, the city council and our city clerk Brenda Pre. Uh, we have 10 minutes and just to let you know, it's also streaming on YouTube. Um, well, we kind of have standard questions that we're asking everyone and once the 10 minutes is up, that's it. So keep your answers brief. The first question is, why do you want to serve on the historic preservation board?
I've been coming to Palm Springs for probably thirty years. I've owned in Palm Springs for almost ten and I've lived here for two. And I just continue to, the more I learn, the more I fall in love. Just, I'm a, an architect currently with a firm in Chicago, but live in Palm Springs full time. And as I've lived here, I've come to appreciate things more and more. The, the preservation matters symposiums, watching what's happening at the Plaza Theater. Um, I'm a volunteer at the art museum and so I've been keeping track of the Illuminair House. And I'm fascinated by what that's going to be or do or become. So just the longer I'm here, the more I'm interested and the more I see, the more I like and that's just compelled me to become more involved.
Thank you so much for your involvement in Palm Springs. Uh, hi, this is Christie Holstich. What is your understanding of the role of the board?
My understanding is that it's really an advisory role, uh, identify, nominate, recommend uh, potential sites, uh, buildings, neighborhoods, things that are of historical or cultural significance to the community potentially, um, and, uh, and, uh, serve that up to all of you.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you. Uh, Kurt, it's Lisa Middleton. Could you tell us about your, uh, involvement here in Palm Springs? Uh, and how you believe that will help you as you move forward, uh, on the historic site preservation board?
But admittedly, I have limited because I not, I'm not worked in Palm Springs. Like I said, I'm an architect in Chicago, but in Chicago, I worked for a firm for the last twenty-three years that specializes in uh, two things, high-end residential and historical property. So I have a lot of experience working from the other side, working with clients, um, getting the project through if they're a landmark building or in their landmark district, working with the governments in Chicago and in the surrounding suburbs, um, pleading a case before the preservation board of trying to get things, uh, sort of helping buildings evolve and learn to adapt to what they can become. So that's, my experience is really from that side. And it's more limited other than working, living in Palm Springs and being involved at the art museum. That's, that's my experience with historical sites and properties.
Thank you. Hey Kurt, Rhonda Hart here. Is there a secret road from Chicago that leads to Palm Springs?
In fact, it is. There is, uh, though it seems there is, the more I'm, uh, here, the more I see.
I know, it's just so many people from Chicago. That's great. Hey, um, what technical skills do you feel are, um, you know, that you're gonna bring to the historical site preservation board to further its work?
Aside from just being a pure to the core lifetime historical architecture fan, um, my professional experience, particularly in Chicago, though I've lived in Atlanta and Miami and Detroit, uh, doing the same kinds of things, the, just my experience of helping navigate the process between the municipal government, developments, clients, um. I get a, I have a pretty good picture, a pretty good sense of the bigger picture. It's not just any one thing, but you're constantly juggling between multiple things. What's best to keep the development going? Don't lose the importance of the cultural aspects of the site or the property of the building. And, and satisfying the owner and the client and it's just that constant juggling between. Sometimes nobody wins, everybody wins. Um, I've worked with, uh, consulting firms in Chicago. Uh, Benjamin Historical Consulting is a big one on a number of projects getting landmark status for the project. Um, before we begin restoration. So the client buys the house. We've done that on buildings up to buildings from the nineteen fifties in the suburbs of Chicago. Um, and I've been involved in that, helping research, helping navigate the client side versus the consulting side versus what the government is looking for. So I have that experience.
Great, thank you.
Hi Kurt, Jeffrey, Jeffrey Bernstein here. Um, so you went into two preservation matters. So what do you gotten right and wrong? And what do you think are the challenges going forward?
I think, I am impressed by what has gone right. Um, I like that Palm Springs as opposed to coming from a bigger place, Atlanta, Chicago. Um, Atlanta seems they just wanted to bulldoze everything. Chicago has a, developed a decent balance. But I'm impressed by how much, how aware Palm Springs Council and citizens are. And, and it, it's very reassuring to me. It just makes me very happy that you all are doing a great job. Um, I think just more of that. The trick is going to be, of course, how do you maintain Palm Springs? For what it is, you know, this lovely, beautiful, historically significant resort, cultural. How do you maintain that and still allow for development? So I think that's the, the development side of it is the real trick. Anyone can sort of say that's an important building and stamp it and freeze it. But how do you allow a commercial building to learn and to evolve is a really tricky thing and I find that fascinating. I think so far it's been pretty well done here.
My next question. So great. Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Kurt. Um, and just, uh, are you interested in serving on any other commissions?
Um, yeah, sure, uh, it would depend on what they are and. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm eager to dig deeper into Palm Springs, um, as I did in Chicago. So, yeah, I would.
Awesome. Thanks. Well, we appreciate it, Kurt, and have the good rest of your day. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. We're waiting for the first time.
Christopher is on his way. He's having Uber.
Yep, Carl is. So thanks. Hi Carl, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. It's a little loud here. Let me close my door.
All right. Hi Carl.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You're here with the full city council, our city clerk Brenda Pre, and then Kathy Wermutcher of the planning commission. We have ten, just ten minutes for your interview. We're asking the same standard questions to everyone. Um, so we're gonna, oh, this is also streaming on YouTube. So the, the first question for you is, why do you want to serve on the planning commission?
Well, I, I, I think I'm gonna blame Jeff Coors for getting me involved in city politics about seven or eight years ago, starting with the ethics committee and, uh, and ever since then, I've been involved on commissions and other things throughout the city ad hoc. Groups, working with the swim stadium and stuff. So, uh, I've worked a lot with planning with our new development here at DAP and also with some of our partners, Monarch and, uh, West Hollywood developers. So I've had a lot of experience dealing with our planning commission and feel I would be an excellent addition to that with my background in development and legal. And working with the county, I also had to work, uh, with our county supervisors to get the approval for this development. So I've actually gone through the entire process from development to almost conclusion on affordable housing projects. And totaling up to three at this point.
Great. Sorry, that's great. Um, what's your understanding of the role of the planning commission?
Well, commissions are advisory in nature. They advise city council. Uh, they are sort of the, the on-the-ground frontline workers who interact with the public and those who are trying to bring something to the city. And it's sort of the, the nuts and bolts of making the sausage and preparing it to deliver it to the council when it's prepared to. And we are the voice of the citizens. And I also am very involved with One PS. And our, anytime there's a new development, you know, we all get together and we discuss, well, this is coming into our neighborhood. What will be the effect be on traffic, on tra- on, on pedestrians? On just the community in general. So there's a whole multifaceted issue all rolled into one.
Thank you.
Hey Carl, Rhonda Hart here. Who, uh, you shared a little bit about community involvement. Um, can you expand a little bit more on the, your, your community involvement and, uh, what you've gained from that involvement?
I expand, uh, I mean, there's still, I have this whole list of groups I'm attached to, boards I serve on, uh, PACs I'm on. So it's the whole, a lot of political affiliations. And the, the benefit of that though is to make sure that the, the citizen's voice is being heard. We're very fortunate here. We're a smaller city and city council is very keen to the voice of the population. I'll say, for example, back we were looking into, what was it, measure B for, uh, the Airbnbs? Uh, that was a prime example of, let's hear what both sides of the argument are. What the realtors and landlords are people that want to, you know, own these properties and have them for rent versus the neighborhoods where, I, I live and there are several on my block and how that affects my quality of life. So it's really being open to the voice of the public and reacting to the needs of the public as we see best fits the majority of our citizens.
How about your, what qualifications do you bring to Measure J Commission that you think will serve?
Uh, again, uh, I've worked in development here at DAP, uh, for low income housing. Our, our project as long as, as well as West Hollywood Development and Monarch. So I've had the entire exposure from going to, uh, to, to the county supervisors to get permission, going, working with the FAA to get, uh, access for building close to the airport runway, active runways. Uh, I've worked with all the engineering firms to, from, from, uh, working with flood control and dry utilities. So it's the whole soup to nuts experience for developing.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Hi Carl, Jeffrey.
Hi Jeffrey.
Uh, so what do you think the planning commission's gotten right and wrong in the past? What do you think the challenge is going forward?
Um, but I, I think from, from the citizen's point of view, the only pushback we will hear would be that delayed, delayed construction. Um, that's the one thing most citizens see and are concerned about. Projects that get started and never get finished or never really even get started. They, you know, fence off an area. We have, we have a golf course over here in our neighborhood, as you know, that went fallow. And developers have been reluctant. So, but in recent times, this, this council, the city in general has become a little more aggressive and forcing our future developers to, you know, prove that they have bond, they have the funding. I would say, take Dream Hotel for an example, that, you know, say now it's like every quarter, you have to prove you have the financing to go forward. So I think that's something that has been done right to rectify that other issue.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Carl. And I think we, you had also applied to Parks and Rec. Are, were there any other commissions that you were interested in?
Not at this time.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Did you have anything else? Uh, Kathy, did you have anything?
The only question I'd have, and I think you've already answered it for me, is your time availability for planning commission?
Yeah, that was my only concern with it as well. And I have actually have, have started to phase off of some other, uh, board commissions just as my natural time has ended. So that has freed up time. So I feel that would allow me to participate. But as you see, uh, the six years I was on sustainability, I think I missed two meetings, uh, six shifts. So I'm everyone froze. Everything froze there for a second, so I didn't know.
We're happy that you applied and.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Is Christopher here?
Yes.
Great.
She wants a baby this week. Do you think that she would be in the life this? Or is that too soon? But it's also, it's up to her. She would want to, you know. I'm just, or I don't know if I need to uncover it and to figure it out. But she's gonna find out on Mondays. So Monday she'll find out when she'll be induced, but they wanna do it the thirty-eighth week.
Hello. All right. Hi Christopher. Thank you so much for being here. Um, we have ten minutes for your have maybe one person watching. It's fine. So we're just gonna start off with, why do you want to serve on the historic preservation committee?
Um, I come from the East Coast, um, where preservation is pretty huge. Um, I own the home in Provincetown. I know Cape Cod is extremely large. Um, so I've been part of, not on committees, but I've had to be in front of committees many times. So my interest in it has been very, I've been very interested for a long time. Um, I did not know the sign, the behind the scenes on what went on, especially in New York City. When everybody told me the building had to be appointed as soon as I got onto the committee or the co-op board. I was like, you know, money, things. You learn a lot. It has to be looked at. And, uh, so you learn a lot, what can be done and can't be done. Um, and then you hear, when you live in Provincetown, it gets a lot worse because we have homes that were floated over and they're flagged. They built homes and floated them over to Provincetown. And those would have special placards and there wasn't much you could do with those homes. I didn't have one of those, thank goodness, but I had an old home that basically you had to watch what you did, meaning colors. Um, if you were doing any structural, uh, additions, which didn't have to be done, but somebody wanted a skylight and it couldn't be seen anywhere on the street. So you learned a lot about, and then you walk around and you see, and you understand why. And first time I ever lived in Boston, I lived in the back bay. I don't know if anybody knows Boston, but it's beautiful. Okay. And so there's the Back Bay and these beautiful brownstones. And then there's this monstrosity on a very exquisite street of a apartment building. And I used to scratch my head, how does this ever happen? The seventies. And then you always hear in New York and Boston, the things are built on there. It's the seventies. But getting back to is, um, my background is product development and management. Um, actually in the home and house bills world, my whole career. And I learned that's everything from concept to market. So that's working with the trends, that's working with what's, uh, buyers are looking for and products and how to source it. And then from soup to nuts. So whatever this is, people think it's easy. It's not so easy when it's starting. Because there's a lot that has to do with it. And there's a lot of laws behind it and things that you have to look at. And so I have a background of, you know, soup to nuts of, okay, these are the rules, this is what it needs, and this is what it should look like. And it keeps it to, and this is what will help it sell. So going back to now, here you want me, or I wanna be on the historical committee. I love mid-century modern. Um, I was a furniture buyer at one point and developer. And it was my favorite, it was my favorite category. It sold the best. And the first time I ever came here, I was just in awe, which was like in two thousand and fifteen. I came for six weeks to see if I would like it, um, just to, um, get away for the winter from Provincetown, because I owned two, um, like coastal furniture accessory stores, uh, when I left corporate America. And so I was like, oh, my God, that's why I found.
This is it.
And then you learn about the history. I mean, because I've always lived in a lot of, I lived in history. I lived in New York City, like on the Upper West Side, a lot of history. And then when you live in Boston three times, and you have a home in one of the oldest where the pilgrims landed literally first, which is true. Right? Um, you learn a lot about all this. Provincetown is just like, I can only imagine if that board wasn't there. And I mean, I had to sit in front of these boards um, many times because I had a store and you had to, you know, there were certain rules to follow. And then I had a store fifty miles away in the town of Brewster, which is beautiful, if you know it. And that got down to the sign, you know, to the parking lot. I was getting into this old house that was on the, what they consider the swamp area that was important. I'm like, why is this so important? They were all like, the house never should have been built. It's not my fault. You know, so guidelines. I mean, you learn to understand the guidelines kept the town really gorgeous. And so you know, you you walk around Palm Springs, I see what's going on. I just like to make sure that it stays to what it was founded, you know, by why people come here and, you know, just look at mid-century.
Have you been to any of the HSPV meetings here?
I have not, actually. It is, I can imagine how, I mean, I'm sitting in them, you can imagine, I used to especially in Provincetown, I was, you weren't alone. You sat and you heard everything. And it was kind of like, you know, it was, it was, you learned a lot. Um, there's a lot to learn. I mean, I had been reading over things, like, I hope they don't ask me about all these codes. I mean, I understand historic one and two. You know, because I was looking at my own neighborhood. I'm like, oh, yeah, you know.
And my apologies for being late.
Oh, please don't.
Uh, tell us about your civic involvement here in Palm Springs and how that's gonna help you, uh, on the HSPV.
Um, my citizen civic involvement, as far as be, it would only be actually now on uh, uh, if I was picked to be on this board. I have been kind of in a I am involved at the health shelter, which just started. Um, it's only because of when I moved here, there were a lot of things. My mother was sick. And then, and then we had COVID, and I can go on the list. And now all of a sudden this year, it's like I'm sitting here going.
An awful lot of that's been due to branches you had elsewhere. But those allowed you to connect with local preservationists and others that are involved in activities uh, in the preservation community here?
Uh, no, no. I mean, I have heard conversations within my own community where I live about what's going on next door. And it's very interesting if you saw where I live. I live next to the old racket club. So I only know what goes on from who was ever talking about it at that time. And I'm like, and I can stay quiet because I'm like, it's very interesting, you know, I'm sure it's quite a problem. Thank you. And I'm good, Jeffrey.
One minute, two minutes. So what do you think Palm Springs has gotten right and wrong in terms of preservation?
Um, I believe, I think what they've gotten right is, and I'm only looking at it from living here full-time the past few years. I think the preservation of any, especially with the when you think of Palm Springs, and you know anything about mid-century modern, it's like the Wexler and the Frey houses. And what you've done with those and and how they're a big part of mid-century modernism week, which I think is a big thing. I think when you drive up and down neighborhoods, I don't know your involvement. I've watched neighborhoods change, especially the one next door to mine. Um, the homes itself, I've walked on the new tier. But, um, and I see what's going on. I like that. And I don't know how involved you are with that, but there is some consistency that's nice. Um, I think that, um, the buildings that you have kept to preserve are are correct. Um, I almost wish there were more buildings. And anything moving forward, I would want it to fit into the scope of the architecture.
Right.
Chris, okay. How do you balance development with preservation?
Um, balance development with preservation. I think it's a working environment. You know, it's PM. I would assume that who's ever developing something would know that they're coming into what everybody that lives here feels is an historical. There's, there's a lot of history here. I know a lot, but they wanna make it that way and keep small history here. I mean, it is pretty small. But, you know, it's keeping the consistency because it can go out of whack very quickly. So if you're talking about a huge development, I think that I don't know what the rules are when a developer comes to you and says they have fifteen hundred homes to fill up. But it would be nice if it fit within the community.
Thank you. Great. Well, thank you so much, Christopher. I really appreciate it. Our time is up. But we will let you know soon. And thank you for taking the time. Thank you. All right. So at this time, we will begin our deliberations. No. You can come up here if you want, Kathy.